All right, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, April 14th, 2025 at 7:05. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santaynez.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. All right, can I have everybody rise for the invocation led by myself and the pledge of allegiance by Jim Delonga or Director of Economic Development? Heavenly Father, please watch over our community here tonight as we try to make the best decisions for the city of Bellflower. As we try to make the city a safe and prosperous community, Lord always protect the people that are our community. And make us safe and take care of us and don't forget our servicemen overseas that are doing a great job to make us safe in this world. In your name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, City Council announcements. Excuse me, I'll start. Experience an evening of talent at the Young Artist Night hosted by Bellflower Symphony Association on Saturday, April 19th. This special concert will highlight winners of the Young Artists Concerto Competition showcasing the next generation of musicians. The event begins at 7:00 PM at the William and Jane Bristol Auditorium here at our very own City Hall, located at 16600 Civic Center Drive. Whether you are a longtime supporter of the Symphony or a first-time attendee, this is a night you won't want to miss. A mission is free, and for more information, you may please call 562-888-4276. Mayor Protem Sunny Santaynez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Pay tribute to Bellflower's military heroes with the Bellflower Honors Program, which offers residents the opportunity to dedicate a street pole banner or inscribe brick in recognition of local veterans. Your contribution creates a lasting tribute to our local veterans, ensuring that their sacrifices are remembered for generations to come. Street pole banners will be displayed along Flower Street and along the boulevard between Woodruff Avenue and Bellflower Boulevard for one calendar year from the installation date. Commemorative bricks will be placed in a reflection area at the Veterans Memorial located at 9918 Flower Street, serving a tribute to those who served. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2258. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sunny Santaynez. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Bellflower is helping residents go green with the Free Used Oil and Filter Recycling Event that's going to be held on Saturday, April 26th. Bring your used oil filter and your old oil and exchange it for a brand-new oil filter. This event runs from 9:00 in the morning till 12:00, and it's going to be held at the Auto Zone at 10239 Rosecrans here in Bellflower. That's near the intersection of Rosecrans and Woodruff. It's open to Bellflower residents only. Remember to bring your ID to prove you are a resident. For more information, please visit tinurl.com/bellfloweroilrecycling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Wendy Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Invite your family and friends for a fun-filled morning and join the Bellflower Noon Lions Club for a pancake breakfast with the Easter Bunny at Bellflower Moose Lodge located at 9320 Alondra Boulevard on Saturday, April 19th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. There'll be fun games, Easter egg coloring for the kids, and an opportunity to take pictures with the Easter Bunny. Tickets are available now. For more information, please call 562-331-9265. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The next composting event is just around the corner on Saturday, April 19th from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. The CRNR Environmental Services Team will provide residents with two free bags of compost at the Public Works Yard located at 9944 Floravista Street. Made from organic waste collected through the city's Green Waste Program, compost is perfect for your gardening and landscaping needs. Use it as much to retain moisture, a soil amendment to improve structure, or potting soil for your plants. Don't forget to bring proof of residency such as a California driver's license or utility bill. Make sure to arrive early as supplies are limited. For more information, please contact the Public Works Department at 562-804-1424, extension 2283. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Okay, right now, we're going to have a presentation for, I mean, a proclamation for the DMV Donate for Life California Month proclamation, and the recipient tonight will be Dana Stumpf, the Ambassador of One Legacy. So have my colleagues meet us on the riser, and then, Dana, have you meet us over here, too. Yeah, you can shut the camera for the bright light off. It's a train coming at us. Ah, it's nice. Get rid of the screen. It's frozen down?
There you go.
Okay, it's going up. Okay, well, it's going. All right, today, we got a proclamation on behalf of the city of Bellflower for the DMV Donate for Life here in California. It's the month, and it's an amazing thing that donating organs and whatnot. I know I have the pink dot on the driver's license, and it's, when it touches you in certain ways, it's kind of a special thing. Until you've done it or had to touch someone that had an organ transplant or on a waiting list, you don't understand. And with that, I would like to say, where's Organ Eye Tissue Marrow Blood Donation Life Giving Acts Recognized Worldwide as Inspirations of Compassion to Those in Need? More than 103,000 individuals nationwide and more than 23,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. An average of 17 people each day die waiting for an organ. And I'm not going to read everything here because it's pretty long. California residents can sign up to be an organ eye or tissue donor when applying or renewing for the driver's license or your ID cards at any California Department of Motor Vehicles. Therefore, IRA Dutton, Mayor of the city of Bellflower, do proclimate April 25th as DMV Donate Life California Month, and encourage all Californians to check the yes when applying and renewing their driver's license or your ID card, or by signing up at the website at www.donate life california.org, or www.dunvidacalifornia.org. And with that, I'd like to award you this proclamation, Dana. And let's take a couple of pictures here first, and then Dana's going to tell us something. Yes, you can, while we're fresh here.
Sure, yeah, I would like to, so I can hold the picture. Hello, Bellflower. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am an ambassador for One Legacy, which is the organ procurement organization for this part of California, and we do serve Donate Life as well. And this is, I'm going to make my, they said I had two minutes, so I will make this very quick. Eight years ago yesterday, our son Dylan called us, and he was coming home from college for Easter break. It was a Thursday night, and he said, "Mom, I was just in a fender bender. My car won't start." I said, "Okay." Well, Dad and I, it was about 9:00 at night, and my husband and I, we live in Long Beach, and we were like, "Okay, we're heading to you." While he was waiting for CHPNS to arrive, a truck hit his car at 65 miles an hour. My husband and I arrived on the scene, and Dylan was never conscious from that day forward. So on April, this was 2017, so the 13th was his accident, the 16th, he was declared brain dead, and the 19th, he was a donor. I raise my kids. I have three children, and I raise them all knowing about organ donation because when I was a child, my mom had a liver disease and had two liver transplants. When I was 14, unfortunately, she died, but I raised my kids knowing how important it was to be a donor. And so all three of them at 16 chose to be an organ donor. Of course, you never dream that's going to come to fruition, but I'm so thankful that we knew exactly what Dylan would want in that moment of crisis because I pray that none of you are ever faced with that with children. We miss them every single day. It's been eight years. It'll be eight years this Wednesday. And, you know, the beautiful thing is that life goes on, and, you know, we have beautiful times now, and, you know, but not a day goes by that we don't miss Dylan. So I just want to thank the city of Bellflower for recognizing this month as the Donate Life Month. And, yeah, it just means the world to me as a donor mom that you guys are willing to do this for us. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we're good. Presentation from the Serritos College President, Dr. Jose Fierro, and the trustee, James Cody Berkey. Were you going to do it from the podium, or?
Okay.
Yeah, I think you'd do it there. Okay.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
The council members, it's good to be here again.
Yeah, thanks for coming out tonight.
It is my pleasure, and it's stuff that I like to make at least once a year. So we've been doing this for a while now. This is my 10th year, finishing my 10th year at Serritos College, so longstanding relationship with all of you. So thank you very much for your continued support. Also want to convey trustee Mariana Rio's greetings to all of you. She was scheduled to come this evening to deliver this presentation with us, but she had a family emergency to attend, so she sent her greetings.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a quick presentation for you, and we want to begin by focusing on the work that we are doing with our students and how the support and the investment that you make in our college is really making things better for our campus. So this past year, we had another graduation record in which we awarded nearly 8,200 degrees and certificates. And we started calculating that in 2018, but early on, I said that I've been at the college for 10 years now. So our first commencement that I had the honor to lead, we awarded about 2,500 degrees and certificates. So we have slowly but surely every year increased the number of credentials that we award to our students. And we do this because obviously our job is to ensure that our students attain their degrees or certificates that they came for. But the second part of that is the impact in our communities. Higher degree means higher wages. Higher wages means a better income. Better income means our students are going to be contributing to our entire taxpayer base in a larger manner. And when we look at the data of our graduates, a large number of our graduates, even when they transfer and go to universities, they tend to come back and live in our communities or our surrounding communities. So we recently looked at some of our graduation data and where do our students transfer, and we found that nearly 80% of our students transfer to four-year universities that are within about nine miles from us. So they stay local. So we feel that the impact of education really is a long-term impact on economic development. Because of the efforts of our entire campus, we have been able to position ourselves as a national example. And last year, we received a seal, which is called the Seal of Excellencia in Education, which is a seal that is given to educational institutions who serve predominantly Latino or Latina students. And this seal represents our capacity to help them go through their programs, graduate, and achieve academic success. In California, out of 116 community colleges, there's only three of us that have received the seal. This is not something that you just go and get. This is something that you have to qualify, apply, interview, evaluations, and so on. It took us a couple of cycles to be able to get it, but eventually we were able to receive this seal, which essentially shows the work of our faculty, staff, and administrators around campus is student-centered and community-oriented.
So if you go back just one more slide, one of the things that I like to point out on this is that we didn't grow the number of students who are eligible to come to the college. Instead, this is a lot of work, I would like to say that it correlates with my time on the board, but reality, it's Dr. Fierro and his staff. We did a lot of work to be able to get the same student base to get through the college faster, right? So they're able, many more students are being able to succeed and graduate on time than ever before. And that's, that is, there's a lot of innovation that goes on, a lot of hard work, a lot of us trying new things about how we interact with students, keep kids enrolled, to be able to do one-on-one outreach sometimes. Hey, you haven't been, you didn't enroll in classes, what's up? And somebody actually gives them a phone call, right? So that level of, that level of care, we don't lower the standards academically, but we lower, we hire, heighten our expectations of how the staff interact with folks. So that's what you see in that number there. The other thing I want to point out on the next slide, this seal is kind of fun because it shows, it's kind of a third-party, hard-to-get example of, that really stacks up against a lot of the things that we've been able to achieve at the college. So the completion rates are a big one. Another one that relates to the community here is our early college program. So working with the local school districts to have dual enrollment, so folks that are in high school can get college credit while they're still in high school, and it's a pretty good deal. And when we started really focusing in on that in 2021, we had about 95 students from across the area that were enrolled in dual enrollment. Today, that's over 5,000, right? So there's a, there's a lot of, like, kind of hard work that the people put together, but that creates a really easy path for folks to go get a college degree by the time they graduate high school locally.
Thank you, trustee Berkey. And the last thing to mention on the seal is that this is not one of those things that you do once and done. In order for us to stay a seal-certified institution, we have to show continuous improvement, and we are evaluated and have to reapply every four years. And if you don't meet the standard then, you will be known as formerly a Seal of Excellencia institution. So that is something that I really enjoy about this process because it's not something that you get once, and then you get to write on the success of that one year, but it's something that consistently makes us focus on continuous improvement, which is obviously something that we're trying to also instill in our students. We also want to thank the residents of Bellflower and our entire service area. Because of the support of our community, we have been able to renovate newer buildings and get new buildings on campus. Some of you have had the opportunity to be on campus, and we have excellent facilities for our students to be able to receive their education. So in fall 2025, you will receive an invitation to go to our ribbon-cutting ceremony of the renovation of the Health Sciences Building. This building is where we have most of our medical programs, and it was one of the older buildings on campus, and we have been able to refurbish the entire building and bring the latest and greatest equipment for our students so they are able to learn with the equipment that they are going to find at their medical facilities when they go to work. Because innovation is something that we do day in and day out, we figure that we needed to start mirroring some of what our local community, state, and students are looking for, and that is Serritos Blue is going green. And essentially, this means that we are moving into a direction in which we are able to run our campus without cutting any services or making drastic changes in the greenest possible way. So on Wednesday, we have our state of the college, and I hope all of you are going, and if you are not, I will be happy to send you an invitation tomorrow. And you will see that there is some construction in our parking lots, and that construction is to, in the very near future, build carpores with every single one of those spots having solar panels. The solar panels are going to replace about 85% of the energy that we consume on campus. We are already using recycled water, to reclaim water, to be able to replace most of the water that we use on campus, and we save about 30 million gallons per year on water consumption. So with these, we are positioning ourselves not only to be an academic powerhouse, but to be perhaps the greenest college in the nation once these plans are fully completed. About a year ago, I gave you the news that we are moving into the baccalaureate degree spaces, and last time, we got our approval for the baccalaureate degree on dental hygiene that is going very well, and we'll be opening our program very soon. In the meantime, we were able to submit next application, and we just received preliminary approval for our second baccalaureate degree that is in field ironworkers. So essentially, it's to help those who are in the trades get managerial skills to be able to move into the management ladder and within the trades and so on. We have noticed working with some of our labor partners that there are significant gaps of those who wish to transition from working the field to supervisors, managers, and so on within their organizations, and we are currently waiting for the final approval coming from the chancellor's office. So trustee Berkeley mentioned, we have continually expanded our dual enrollment programs to ensure that we are offering pathways from the high school into the community college into the transfer or the workforce. With that, we are focusing on making sure that the degrees and certificates that we offer are current, their job openings in our local community, and that they lead to higher wages.
Which is a perfect segue. So one of the things that I've really wanted to dig into in the last year or two is get a sense of the economic impact of having Serritos College here in southeast LA and particularly here in Bellflower. It's our only higher, you know, higher education option that's directly tied to the city of Bellflower. There's about 23,000 students at Serritos College. It's pretty easy to overlook how large that student population is. And about a quarter of our service area by population is the city of Bellflower. So, and so big that I represent one-fifth of the area, and I can't even quite get all of Bellflower in my, in my district. So the, the impact on, on the community here in the city is really notable, right? So you've got $8,000 to $11,000 a year that anybody, that people make in addition if they go get a bachelor's degree for the rest of their lives every single year, or if they get a bachelor's degree instead of associate's, excuse me, bachelor's degree. We're one of the only community colleges in the state that's actually been okayed to have bachelor's programs, right? So that's already a step up. But you got $30,000 more per year that you'll make if you go through that, and those are people who stick around and are right here, here in Bellflower. If you look at this on a larger level, the impact of Serritos College on our local economy, we had a third-party group take a look at this, and the data that they polled showed that our region, southeast LA, has over half a billion dollars a year impact from Serritos College existing. So if that didn't exist, we'd be half a billion dollars short every year. And about $400 million of added income to our area comes from people gaining skills at Serritos College and then going into the workforce. So there's an outsized impact on how much people make and how prosperous our community is based on the health of the institution. I think the, the other stat that really blew my mind was for every $1 that you invest in Serritos College, the the impact was approximately $10.50. So you get like a 10 to 1 ROI on this investment. So in terms of being a really great asset and center for Bellflower's economic prosperity, this has been a really distinct pleasure mine to serve.
I couldn't say it any better. Okay, and do you have any questions for us?
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
So you mentioned that you could obtain a bachelor's degree. What field of study is that available in?
Right now, the one that we are opening, coming up, is dental hygiene, bachelor's degree in dental hygiene. The next one that we're waiting for approval is essentially field ironworker management, and that will require you to be on the apprenticeship track of one of the trades, be on the field for a while, and then you can enter the baccalaureate degree program. And that will be for those members who are And that will be for those members who are looking into moving into the administration and away from the field.
So, I mean, as you can imagine, field ironwork, if you're going to go into management, that's already a lucrative career. But if you're going to go into the business and management of field ironwork, that's a pretty good degree to get.
Yes. So I noticed that you built a new performing arts center.
Correct.
And the old one, which was named for Ralph Burnight, has been removed. Will his name be applied to the new center or not?
Not at this time.
You realize he was the founder of the college and he's from Bellflower?
I do know that, yes.
So I'd like to see his name reestablished there, you know, that was his idea to have Cerritos College. And it's always stood for the last 40 years on that building, but I noticed there's nowhere to be found that his name exists.
Yeah, I will be happy to convey that to the, to the board that rules on naming.
Yeah, Dr. Ralph Burnight. He originally was the superintendent of schools for Excelsior Union School District and it was his idea to formulate and buy all those dairy farms and put that together. And without him, there probably wouldn't be a Cerritos College. So I think that merits consideration.
I will convey the information.
Very prominent. And Ray, you know, as a small businessman and I'm retired now, but it was always difficult to be able to find quality employees to do the kind of work that we were offering, which was mechanical work. And Ray Dutton, of course, has got a magnificent garage over here in Bellflower. And Ray has tried, now I'm speaking on your behalf, you break it up the rest of it. How difficult it is for you to be able to obtain college graduates in the automotive program?
It's, it's very difficult to find the train because there was a long while there that everybody wanted to be software, computers or whatever. And if I was doing kids again, I'd say, hey, grow up, be a plumber, electrician, AC heater guy and do the trades. But I, Cerritos College has always had a great automotive program and I actually went to Cerritos College and did electronics. And before I feel, you know, went into automotive and
Go Falcons.
Who would have thought in the seventies to now that cars are electronic? I know so much about electronics from high school and Cerritos that I can apply to cars. It's unbelievable. You know, like, you know, my employees, how do you know that?
Cerritos College.
It just happened, you know, who would have known? But, you know, my travels in life, you know, you never know where they're going to go, but I had got employees and still do, they wandered in from the automotive program. And, and probably started 30 years ago. And I had young ladies from the automotive program work for me and whatnot and that was 30 years ago and, and, but they come in and you, you know, they, you know, they just want to work and get experience because they're instructors. I don't know what the program is, but there's some kind of program. You go and seek some employment while you're with training you and whatnot, so.
Yeah, the, the automotive program is still as popular as you remember, incredibly high demand. So we usually every cohort is full and students are hired even before they finish their, their program. It is, as you mentioned, a really good field. Program is very, very prolific, but we're always open to additional partnerships and way to improve what we do. So happy to have any conversations regarding that.
I got a Cerritos College story here. So last summer, I hired this, this kid. He loves mechanic and, and so I interviewed him, don't know nothing. He said he was at, going to a school in Long Beach somewhere, high school, just graduated. This is what I want to do. And seemed like he had the knack of being, thinking mechanical, we think different. And so I hired him and I hired another guy. I hired two to keep one. And they were both kids and the other guy just graduated. We're getting busy this summer, you know, let's see how it's going to goes. And I would, they told my guys that, you know, this guy's not going to make it, you know, I don't think he's, he was, he was quiet and didn't know anything. Well, I was wrong. The kid that his mother didn't want him to come work for, you don't want to be a mechanic. He has excelled in every way. He, his mother said, well, if you're going to do that, you got to go to school. And I said, so you get over to Cerritos College, they got the best program around. And he's, he's doing, he's working me all day and going to school every night.
I read recently the fastest way to get a teenager to do something is to tell them that they can. And apparently they do it pretty quick. You probably need to send a thank you, a thank you card to the mom.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's all I have.
Mayor, thank you. Dr. Pharoah, thank you so much. It's been 10 years already, right?
10 years.
Oh my God. I still, I still remember that the less than majority of the board of trustees back then went out to see you for the interview. They went to see you, so it's the other way around.
To Wyoming.
I know. They must have, they must have liked you back then.
Yeah.
And they love you now. So thank you for your service. Among the different associate degree programs, which is the most popular?
Business, I think businesses are number one, followed very closely by psychology and social science, social behavioral sciences, but business by far is the largest program.
Is it also true for the transfer to the universities? Still the same business?
Yeah, business across the board is incredibly popular.
And when would you start the, the bachelor's degree in dental hygiene? You said soon.
We are collecting applications, spring, spring of '26, first cohort, '26.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's a four-year program?
That is a two-year program. So it's a two plus two, basically. In order to be part of the baccalaureate degree, you should have already completed your associate's degree.
Oh, I see.
Looking for another career, Mayor Protem?
It's never too late.
We'll, we'll get you into the first two and, you know.
Okay, thank you so much. Keep up the good, and I will see you on Wednesday.
See you Wednesday.
Anybody else? Mr. Sanchez, go ahead.
No questions, Mr. Mayor, but just some comments. Obviously, I want to thank you both for being here this evening and presenting, kind of giving us an update. I think it's, I'm looking forward to the state of the college on Wednesday as well, but just want to congratulate you on all the work that you've been doing. It's phenomenal work. You've got some leading tech, technical education programs, not only, as mentioned, in welding, automotive, in, in many health occupations and cybersecurity, if I'm understanding correctly. Most importantly, you've, I've been learning a lot about housing and how important housing is, right? In, in the sense of allowing us individuals to feel safe so that we can, you know, and have a roof over our head so that we may go out and pursue a higher career, higher education, so that we may live a better life and work hard to have that life. And I think you guys have an amazing program, what you've done out there in your housing. You're one of the only colleges in the nation that have taken that step, that have made that possible. So just commend yourselves for that. And I hope you can continue down that path. I know you guys have bigger visions, so I, you know, we'll always be cheering you on and you know that. And so with that, thank you guys. Just thank you for being here.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I mean, we, we talk about really neat accolades and kind of performance metrics. One of the things behind that is recognizing that a lot of the folks who enroll at Cerritos College that come from our area don't always come from the most wealthy backgrounds and they may come, you know, they're, they're, they got raised up in a situation where they don't necessarily have all the, the right kind of foundation to make it easy to go to school. We try to provide an opportunity for, for folks to be able to have a roof over your head. We have a well-known food pantry that's organized just like a supermarket, high dignity. And a lot of other opportunities to get clothes, business attire and that for interviews. So that folks, just because they didn't come from much, doesn't mean they can't go anywhere, so.
Right. And can you elaborate a little bit more on your developed mental health support structure that you guys have taken on over there, which I think is phenomenal?
Yeah, so a few years back, we were able to hire a mental health professional who had the experience to be able to take on interns. And over time, she has been able to build a very robust program with graduate students and clinics around our area to meet the mental health needs of our students. Our students have access to, to a significant number of mental health interns that are graduate students and the clinics where they are taking classes from, which reduces our wait time quite a bit and gives that personal touch that is needed today. A lot of places that don't have access to these services end up doing the digital app thing, which I don't necessarily think is a bad a bad approach, but I do think they having the, the face-to-face approach and being able to reach someone on campus is of great benefit for our student. The program has grown so much that we are currently, and I think it's already posted, hiring an assistant director for that program in order to, to, to build another layer in which we're able to expand the number of graduate interns that we have serving our students.
Thank you, Dr. Pharoah. I, I bring that up because those are the clear things that you guys have done differently that have helped raise those numbers of graduations up. It's when we are able to take care of the basic needs of our lives, we're able to focus, we're able to go to class, we're able to go to work, we're able to do those things. And I think those are important. So keep up the great work. Appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Great presentation and we always enjoy you and we'll wait for the next year's update.
Thank you. Go Falcons.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the time and the support.
Okay, Mr. Smoot, item 10, public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Okay, anybody wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? This is your time where you can approach the podium, sign in, state your name and you got three minutes. Okay. Everybody got enough education on college. Okay, item 11A, Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Jim and Carla to come up and present this item for you.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This evening, the city is conducting a public hearing to review and receive public comment on the substantial amendment to the 2020, 2021 annual action plan to reallocate coronavirus CDBG CV funds. Here's a little background, a little bit of background regarding these funds. On March 27th, 2020, the CARES Act made funding available for local governments to prevent, prepare for and respond to COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic. The city initially received $538,180. Then on September 11th, 2020, an additional $650,300 was made available to the city from HUD for a total of $1,188,480. It is important to note that these funds must be used before November 16th of 2026. This table shows the programs and allocation amounts that the city, that the city funded with CDBG CV funds. Of the $1,188,480 in CDBG CV funds the city received, $780,926 were expended through various programs to assist residents who were negatively impacted by COVID. The total remaining CDBG CV funds to be reallocated is $407,553. Because staff closely monitored these programs, we were aware that not all funds would be expended. Staff revisited the federal guidelines and worked with the city's housing consultant to explore alternative ways to spend these funds. Together, staff and the housing consultant found that in addition to the programs the city previously funded, these funds could also be used to create, expand or enhance public facility and infrastructure projects and for public rights of way and outdoor recreational facility improvements that are located in CDBG low moderate income areas. Since these are CDBG CV funds, there must also be a tieback to COVID to prevent the spread of any future coronavirus. Staff met internally to discuss low moderate income areas within the city where CDBG CV funds could be applied. After discussion and review of these areas, such as improvements at Town Center Plaza, the improvements to the public serving areas of various city facilities and even for the potential conversion of the former Bank of the West building to a public safety building, both the Public Works Director and Economic Development Staff identified the area in front of the kiosk on Belmont Street. This area is in need of a sidewalk redesign due to the increased post-pandemic pedestrian traffic from the city's downtown events and the kiosks. Seating that does not allow for social distancing, a need for improved lighting as well as ADA improvements. The sidewalk redesign at the Town Center Gateway Plaza checks all the boxes. First and foremost, it meets the COVID-19 tieback requirement. It is located in a CDBG low and moderate income area and it is a standalone project that can be completed within the expenditure deadline. Additionally, staff met with a HUD representative who agreed that this project would meet the COVID-19 tieback requirements by encouraging social distancing to prevent the spread of future coronavirus. Based on the foregoing at the February 25th, 2025 city council meeting, council directed staff to prepare a substantial amendment to the 2020, 2021 annual action plan to formally reallocate these COVID funds for the Town Center Gateway Plaza area improvements. The public comment period and this public hearing were duly published in the Los Cerritos Community Newspaper and the draft substantial amendment was posted on the city's website on March 14th of 2025. Staff recommends the city council open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number 25-14 or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation. Staff is available to answer questions related to this item.
Thank you. Carla? I knew that, but I was, I'm just going to say thank you. It's always good to see you here. You're always here and watching the money with strings, right? Leashes, strings. Yeah, yeah. Money always comes with attached strings that you have to think. But anyway, good presentation. The area again is the sidewalk portion Belmont, it says.
Yes.
Is it all of Belmont or the Town Center?
Just in front of the kiosk area.
Just in front of the kiosk area.
I'll add a little bit to that. It also extends to the alley.
Yeah, well, why? I mean, I know I get, you know, is it too cozy and we have to spread it out? I don't know. I'm just, I'm asking.
Pretty much, yeah, because it's
I thought that's what we wanted.
We have, well, remember the string, the major string or leash to these funds is that COVID tieback. And the COVID tieback for these funds is to increase social distancing and encourage social distancing.
But is there somewhere else that it needs it more? And that's, that's the place? I don't know. I'm just asking. I don't know. I just, I mean, we're always, we're always busting up sidewalks. If it ate ADA.
Well, the roots of those trees have busted up a little bit for us already.
Now we're good somewhere.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's... I just, you know, the Town Center Plaza looks dead, too. It's, I mean, am I right? You know, we've talked about reimagining that. I know we can't do it $400,000, but...
Correct, and we're looking at that where we were directed to kind of meet with Parks and Rec and come up with the function, and then come back with a design for that. So that's in the works.
Okay. Anyway, that's just my comment there. Any questions to staff?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Coops?
So Jim, you have some more that you want to add to what's being said?
Not necessarily. We're just trying to answer the questions. It was just, we got to use that COVID tieback. That's the trick on these funds, because we can use them in a lot of places in the city, but we always have to get, in order to get this money spent properly without being audited and having to return it, we have to demonstrate a COVID tieback.
Do you remember meeting with Mr. Ryan Smoot and myself and you this morning?
Yes.
And what did he instruct you to do? You need... Ryan, you want to refresh his memory? You said, "Bring a list of other potential projects that will work or not work." Do you remember telling him?
I believe we had some of the things we considered up on there, did we not?
Yeah, we mentioned them during the presentation.
Can you go back to that slide, Jim?
No, what I mean, absolute things. And you can see from the mayor that we have some consternation about this project.
Understood.
And I believe that we have some time, and I think there's other possibilities to spend this $407,000 that could still meet the criteria. It's a pretty open thing where he tries to do social distancing. And basically, what this project is, is concrete and lights. That's what we're looking to spend $407,000 on, on an area that is landlocked. I mean, you can't make the street wider, and you're not going to change the size of the kiosks. I mean, that, the footprint will always be that size. You can maybe change the way the sidewalk flows, but... And when it says it's going to have something about seating, redesign public sidewalks, improve street lighting, encourage social distancing, and there was something about seating there, I thought. I thought there was something about, you know, there's one or two benches now that are pretty well spread apart from each other. If you brought them closer together, you're really not achieving what was set forth to try to get more social distancing. You know, more seating is going to cause it to be less applicable.
I guess seating would be under encouraged social distancing. You'd take the seats further apart. I mean, I thought it was a cozy area, and that's why I use cozy. And I couldn't imagine, I mean, that, of all the places in Bellflower, that's kind of a quaint little place. It's got a good feel to it. And I'm just thinking, I didn't know Dan met with you guys. I had no clue. And I just come up, you know, I just thought that was...
Well, my thought was this morning was, this is doable, but I believe the city council has enough smarts that we don't have to take the first thing that's offered to us. We all have thoughts as to how to use our money, $407,000, or we lose it. There's enough time. It's 20 months before we get to November 26th. So we have time to, we got to complete the project in order to get the money and use it. In 1985, I built six houses, condos, in 93 days and had them occupied. So I know if you get on it, what construction we've done. And that was clearing a lot besides, 93 days for six houses. So if we've got 20 months, we have time to do something different. Now, it may come back to this, that there's nothing else out there. But my thought was, we have the chance to use this money in a constructive way on something that this could work, but I think we can do better. And I would like to have the council be able to have some input on this before we make a final decision. Anyway.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in. And I want to apologize. I've been out of town. I came in last night, so I haven't had a chance to talk to staff about this item or to talk to any of you on this item. But, you know, I've done some research on this, and my understanding, and, you know, staff, correct me if I'm wrong here, or if I'm off, you know, the path, I guess. I understand, first of all, before I start, I want to say that I understand how hard CDBG funding slash CV funding is. It's very restrict... There's a lot of restrictions. There's a lot of paperwork. There's a lot of things that go with it, especially for the nonprofits. So I completely understand why a lot of agencies and a lot of service providers have either rejected the funds that they were going to receive on this. So with that said, I, you know, I've done some research on this, like I said. One of my understandings is that CDBG fundings can be used, especially the CV funding can be used for the purposes of traffic calming. And hear me when I say this, in the worksheets that I understood, traffic calming measures that encourage walking can qualify for CDBG funding, especially when linked to COVID-19 public health. Why? My understanding is that because it encourages less commuter and bus transportation modes or other types of transportation modes that could, that would put people in, you know, in a single space, and that's for future developments, for future potential pandemics and things of that nature. So traffic calming examples that qualify would be high-visibility crosswalks, pedestrian refuge, eye lens, bulbous or curb extensions, flashing pedestrian crossing signals, and improved signage near schools. All because it helps promote pedestrian friendliness in a neighborhood or in an area to a high-traffic zone. High-traffic zones include businesses or downtowns, schools, specifically Title I schools. And then, the justifications on these, there's four main ones. It's public health and safety, prevention for virus spread, equity and access, and long-term resilience. I, too, hear what my council colleagues are saying, my council colleague Coops is saying. I would like to kind of go back to the drawing board on this item. For me, Belmont Street and Belfour Boulevard is not a high-priority area at this point in time. I think it is functioning. It's... But I think there are way more, at least for me personally, more pertinent and much more areas that are needed. I'll speak to one specifically. On Rose and Cedar, there is a, there is no sidewalk leading to an elementary school where a lot of that community go to and travel to for their school. That would be one. One area of improvement that we could, I think, can justify the use for this funding. We could also run a, we've talked about this in the past, like bulbous or medians in certain high areas where they're speeding in the neighborhoods and the residential areas. Of course, there has to be a nexus to a local area where there is a lot of activity. So I think we can revisit this funding and to Councilmember Coops's point, identify other areas.
I think what Jim was saying was, it has to be in a low-income area or something, some kind of meet that criteria, too, so...
Yeah, it has to be in a low-income area.
I think we can do a better job, but so... Wendy, did you have anything to add?
Nothing more, just to clarify with Victor. With Carl, I saw you writing it down, Rose and Cedar, but we were Coke.
Coke, sorry.
Coke and Rose and Coke. So when Victor said, I pictured the no, across the street from the school where there's no sidewalks whatsoever.
You read his mind.
Yeah, and I was like, wait a minute, I think you said the wrong street. That was all.
I did say the wrong street. I apologize.
Mayor Protem, sunny.
Carla, in your presentation, I only heard about, the other option was the Bank of the West or was there something else that you evaluated?
Did you put it on the screen?
Anything else?
I don't think, I didn't put it on the... I just mentioned it.
Mentioned it, okay.
Yeah, it was...
Was there anything else?
It was a couple of things.
Town Center Plaza.
It was the Town Center Plaza.
Okay.
And improvements to public-serving areas of various city facilities, but...
Like, can you give an example of that?
Lobbies of our facilities where the public would be entered, not where the employees would actually sit and do their work, but the public-serving areas of the public...
Lobby.
Parks, lobby of City Hall, that sort of thing.
Okay. And what else?
And the Bank of the West. Those were the three that I mentioned.
Okay. The other thing I was kind of thinking is, since you're building this tremendous Oak Center, have we looked into the access to the Oak Center once it's built? In terms of sidewalk, in terms of ramps, in terms of ADA compliance? Because I expect there's going to be a lot more people using that facility, using the park, once it's completed. Is the infrastructure ready for that? So I would like staff to look into that as a possibility.
Good idea.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I just had on, I don't think the Bank of the West is a good candidate because it's not the timeline. Repurposing the Bank of the West building, if we go down that road, it's going to be... It'll be expired by then.
Plus, it's going to be a massive cost anyway.
Yeah, it's like...
It's going to be a drop, this one is going to be a drop in the bucket.
Yes, yeah.
All right.
Well... If no one has anything to add, it's, I mean, the comments, it looks like it's... So I'm going to ask for some input. So we sent it back, staff sent it back and not vote on anything?
Yeah. What I would recommend is, if you'd like to review this, I mean, obviously, we have to move fairly quick with this. So what I would recommend is, if you would like us to go through some of the projects that between Lynn and Jim, they did explore and bring those to you guys for some discussion of what the priority might be, we can bring you that discussion first.
Well, let's start it this way. Are, do we feel we're unanimous about Belmont where the kiosks are?
Like to look for something else?
Look for something else other than that. Yeah, that's what I mean.
I would say look for something else.
Did I say it wrong? Yeah, I think that's unanimous.
Got that, yeah.
Yeah. The recommendation is...
And when this came to you guys before, I mean, obviously, it was directed towards this because we've gone through the exercise of looking at some of these projects. But I think it's probably worthwhile to at least bring you the discussion of the multifaceted Venn diagram, if you will, of various requirements for this funding that we have to fit this project into, and then bring you some things to look at for various projects that might fit into that box. So if you'd like to do that, we can put that together pretty quickly and bring it back to you, understanding there's a timing constraint.
To save time, is, would this be something that we could just do, email us a survey of a punch list, and we can pick the best three or something?
I prefer the attorney, but I might see a Brown Act issue with that.
That's why I'm asking right now.
I would suggest...
It's a survey.
I would suggest we bring you back an item for a discussion. We could do that pretty quickly.
That's more safe.
And Mr. Mayor, I don't think that we need to spend the exact $407. If we got to, if it's something really cool...
Yeah, put it with something with it, or take it back.
But I don't think we need to be locked into that number. It's something, we're going to use it all if we can.
Yeah.
But this would be imaginative.
Right. Okay, staff has a new direction now?
I would like to encourage you guys to look at that Rose and Coke. There's literally like nowhere safe for children to walk, right there. If you guys just drive by it, you'll see what, I know exactly where Victor was talking about. So, just an encouragement.
Isn't there's...
It's like a...
No curbs, too, I think. There's an area with no curb.
Yeah, and it's almost like a hill. Yeah, it's like a weird, where the children would walk home from school.
Mr. City Manager, do we want to open the public hearing at this point to get public comment on this? Or should we wait?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
Take as much comment as we can.
Move to open the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second for a public hearing. Without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody in the audience want to chime in on this item?
I'm Darlene Palacios.
Hi, Darlene. Of course.
I know where he's talking about. It's a mess. I live a few blocks from there. It was an excellent idea. I'm totally on board with that. It's not just no sidewalk. It's dirt. It's slippery. There's nowhere to go out even.
We're all aware of it. We know.
Yeah, there's nowhere to go on across the street.
Yeah.
You really have nothing. You have nothing on either side of the street. It's a little bit, I don't know how many blocks it is, but I agree with him 100%. If we could do that, that would be nice.
You have any other ideas?
It's a residential area.
You have any other ideas of your own?
On this issue?
Yeah.
You have good ideas. I recommend you to everybody. I'm going to ask you later, how big is our district? Because I want people to support you, and I believe in you. No, that was such an excellent idea. This is new to me, so I'm thinking of things, but I agree. That other project, I don't think is necessary.
We'll come back in two weeks. We'll do it some more.
Yeah, we'll take reservations by then. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we got a... Oh. We didn't vote on it. Come on up.
It says ADA improvements. What do you mean by that?
That's American Disabilities Act.
Right, so they will...
When I said it, it's usually the, so the wheelchair on an intersection can go up the ramp.
Oh, okay.
That kind of stuff. And ADA is handicap parking and stuff like that. It's all kinds of stuff.
Okay, so they'll widen some parts maybe in some streets? Or is that what the...
Sidewalk cutouts is really, I don't know. If the sidewalk's too narrow, if somebody owns a building, you can't eminent domain it. That's probably not, you could, but that's not a good use of funds.
Right.
You get a foot of sidewalk to make it wide enough. There is an allowable...
It's kind of a strange, I mean, to me, it's kind of strange having this. I know it's a COVID fund, right? I've worked for the hospital, and it's like, okay, so what do you do? I mean...
Everybody has it, yeah. Everybody's trying to disperse this.
In my mind, okay, so hand washing, right? Hand washing stations. Where can you put that? I mean, you can put them maybe in some businesses. I don't know. You can implement that somewhere. People could wash their hands. Now, they just remove them. All of a sudden, oh my God, it's gone. It's like, okay. Before, they were all freaking out. There's like no hand hygiene stations, and now everybody just doesn't care.
Society has moved a different direction.
Moved on, right, from that, so...
Until the next one.
So, in my mind, yeah, and then you're going to freak out again, and then the demand for alcohol is going to be massive again. I've gone through this, because at the hospital, that's, it's to the point people stole, like, all the alcohol pumps from other departments. What are you doing here, you know? So, do you think they'd start doing that, or maybe some masking places? Where could you get some, or maybe they distribute them in some places? Or, I'm not saying that...
Well, if you bought all that stuff, by the time there was another pandemic, they might be outdated. You know, there might be expiration dates on them.
They do.
I know I had a whole bunch of sanitizer, and it all dried up.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just saying, where else could you give the funds other than supplies? Like medical supplies?
I call this funny money, and we got to find a way to use it.
Okay, and so it's more for like...
If you don't use it, don't lose it. Yeah, there's got strings. It's the strings attached.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might make a suggestion. If we continue this item to a date certain, I'm going to suggest May 12th. That gives us a little bit of time to put everything together.
And it keeps us on a hurry of track.
Yeah, it keeps us from having to renotice this.
So, May 12th?
If you'd like, you can keep the public...
April, May 12th, yeah.
May 12th, yeah. You can keep the public hearing open, or you can reopen it that day if you'd like, but that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so you want, we don't have to renotice then if we keep it open, right?
Either way, we don't have to renotice if we go to a date certain.
So we need a motion to continue to May 12th, basically.
Or that would be closing the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion to continue the public hearing to May 12th with the, I'm going to throw in a...
Caveat.
Caveat here, with the emphasis that the traffic calming part mentioned this evening be highly taken into consideration, as my colleague, Councilmember Morris, has also suggested.
Is that a substitute motion?
No, that's the motion.
He made a first, and he made a second.
The motion was to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second on the floor over here already.
We closed the public hearing with our first and second, but we haven't voted on it yet, so...
Yeah.
You're going to reopen it.
Well, I guess it's a substitute motion.
Does he have a second?
Oh, I'll second. But we haven't closed the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. You haven't called it yet.
If we go with my motion, we don't have to close the public hearing.
They don't want to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, let me clarify.
You got me on this one.
Mr. Mayor, just point of order. Mr. Coops made a motion to close the public hearing. I seconded, and then the lady spoke, and so basically, it's still open.
It's open still.
Okay, so you have to call, you have to call the meeting, the public hearing closed.
Yeah.
You have to close it.
Okay, so without objection, the public hearing is closed?
There you go.
And now, it's going to stay closed, but we can reopen it at another on May 12th? That's what I understand.
Do I need a formal motion to go to May 12th?
I will modify my motion...
There you go.
To bring the item back on May 12th with the additional caveat that I stated earlier.
And clarification, we do not have to notice, because that costs money.
Yes, if we continue the item to a date certain, i.e. May 12th, we do not have to renotice.
And then we can reopen the public hearing on the May 12th?
Correct.
Without noticing, okay.
That's correct.
Gotcha. That's the only thing I'm concerned with.
So the motion is to continue the item?
To continue.
Yeah, to date certain, May 12th. To date certain, May 12th. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion on the floor by Sanchez and a second by Morris. Call roll.
Mayor Protem Santinas.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye. Thanks Carla. Okay, item 11B. Mr. Smoot, you want to introduce this, or we're going to have staff do it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I believe Beth and Rowena and our consultants are coming up. They're going to go ahead and present this item for you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Um, the item before you is the second part to our housing element update process. Uh, just for some general background, the city council approved the housing element back in February of 2022 and the State Department of Housing and Community Development adopted and certified the city's housing element in September of 2022. The housing element identifies a series of housing programs that need to address the city's housing needs. As the council is aware, the city was required to plan for a minimum of 3,735 additional dwelling units in the city. Again, that's just to plan for them, not to build them. Um, and we have taken this forward in two phases. Um, so where we're at in the overall process is we have an adopted housing element. We're currently in the implementation phase. Um, as mentioned before, we have taken the steps that are necessary to ensure that we meet our housing need of 37, 35 units. Phase one of the project occurred earlier this year in February and the city council approved several zone changes, general plan amendments and some text amendments, um, in order to create an overlay zone and to amend our TOD or Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan in order to allow for these additional units. So phase one was really to address program 27, which was to ensure the adequate size to accommodate the arena. And phase two, which is being presented tonight, incorporates several code amendments, so a lot of text amendments to our zoning code that addresses the remainder of the housing programs that are identified in our housing plan. Before I turn it over to our consultant, Patty Nahill, I just want to be clear for the record that we did make a revision in your ordinance and that is included on the dais. Um, the revision that was made included a section that relates to the city council acting as the planning agency for this item. So with that background, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, Patty Nahill, and she's going to go over all the text changes, um, that address the programs in the housing element.
Thank you, Elizabeth, Mayor and members of the council. I'm glad to be back to present the phase two of the project. What you have before you this evening is the zoning code text amendments. These are going to be changes to your Bellflower Municipal Code and it is going to be a combination of items that are going to affect six programs of your housing element. It is implementing six out of the 35 that you have agreed to with the implementation. The first one is the density bonus. We also have the accessory dwelling units is going to be changing. You're going to have a catchall category, which is the removal of development constraints in the existing municipal code. You have community care facilities. You have emergency shelters and supportive housing. You have reasonable accommodations for persons with disabilities and you have a new category which is going to address lot consolidations when you have an affordable housing project. Now, we'll get into specifics on each of the items. With the density bonus, what this one is, is it's going to reconcile your existing municipal code that you have addressing density bonus and it's going to be replacing that with the changes that have been made recently to state law. These changes are all going to occur within a new section, which is 1741 of your municipal code and for clarity's sake, we've put them on a separate exhibit, which is exhibit A in your staff report. The next item addresses program nine of the housing element and these are the accessory dwelling units. This will repeal and replace in its entirety the city's existing accessory dwelling unit regulations with the provisions to institute the changes that have been made by state mandates. This one in particular has changed greatly. Under the last legislative sessions that have been coming from Sacramento, there have been massive changes to accessory dwelling unit regulations, including accessory dwelling units, junior dwelling units, and the standards to adopt them have been changing. So, under this amendment, you are going to have the removal of development constraints to build accessory dwelling units. It's going to remove and use an ease of access for the dwelling units, removing antiquated terminology. Under this proposed amendment, it is going to have now a maximum allowable square footage for the dwelling units of 800 square feet. This is a reduction from what you currently have. The other thing that it is allowing is it's going to allow accessory dwelling units on multifamily units, um, or multifamily lots that you have within the city. And it's going to be a conversion or it's going to be new construction rather than a combination of the two scenarios. The next program that we have, this is a catchall one that is embedded in your ordinance. These are ones that change land use designations, allowable uses. This changes setbacks and so that's in the base of your ordinance. It's not in a separate attachment. These include reducing parking requirements in various zones that you have. This will require only a two-car garage and one guest space for dwelling units. It's going to remove the additional parking space requirements that you currently have in your existing code. Another thing that this is going to do is it's going to increase the height requirements in an R3 zone, which will allow up to three stories and 40 feet. This will allow you to achieve your density ranges, which you've committed to, where you have density ranges of 30 dwelling units to the acre, 40 dwelling units to the acre and 100 dwelling units to the acre. So this will allow you to achieve that a little easier. The next one is we were tasked with removing subjective findings that were in your code and you have that in your design review process where you had a structured system, which was a point system, to achieve reductions. You will be still keeping your two-thirds rule, but the point system will be eliminated with this amendment. We have now explicit setbacks that will be put in the document instead of percentages that were used to be in the document or subjective standards.
Can I interrupt? Because something just came up about the two-thirds rule because I was concerned when I read it earlier, I thought it's going to be gone totally. So you said that we can still require that?
Correct. The two-thirds rule will remain. It's just the point sys, the allocation of the point system.
So it cannot be used as a, as a point system anymore?
Right.
Okay, good.
Right.
Because I, I hate to see boxy homes, basically.
Yeah, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, the next item that we have is, is a cleanup item that you have specifically in your code, a list of the zones that you have within the municipal code. We will be adding the specific plan. This is an amendment that you processed recently and we have the new who's zone, the housing opportunity overlay zone that you adopted in, in February. So that's just merely a cleanup item for that. The next program, also under program 13 of the housing element, this addresses community care facilities. Um, again, changes in state law have forced us to do some cleanup items on this one. Um, it will allow, conditionally allows residential care facilities with seven or more persons. We have placed a maximum of 20 persons on the new regulations in residential zones and we have imposed objective standards for review. This is a new section, so you will see all of the text under exhibit C. Next item is emergency shelters, another one similar to density bonus where we're merely reconciling back to current state law provisions, where they are permitted and the regulations governing the use. The proposed amendment specifically allows for the establishment of 30 occupants. This is something that will be new for your city. We will be updating the parking standards based on the number of staff rather than the number of beds or rooms in the facility. And we will be removing the distance requirements associated with schools, parks, transportation stops. These changes are mandated by state law. Um, the development constraints, we will be putting in a single section. You will see that in your exhibit D in your staff report. Next one is supportive housing under program 18. This one permits multifamily and mixed use zones subject to objective standards of their underlying zone, which they're located in. The zoning code amendment will reconcile with the municipal code, the state law changes again. They will be removing developments constraints and these are embedded in your original ordinance that you have before you. Next one, program 25 of the housing element, which is reasonable accommodations. We will be updating the disability definition. We'll be removing findings five and six, which were deemed by HCD to be a constraint to development. We will be removing the public notice and public hearing requirements to be consistent with state law changes. And these changes are also embedded in the ordinance. And the last one that we have is program 29. This is a new one for you. This is one which will address incentives and standards for lot consolidation, parcel mergers, maybe another term you're more familiar with. In the city of Bellflower, you have a lot of substandard lots, um, generally very narrow and long, not necessarily conducive to new development standards. So, HCD has asked for this requirement and what will it do will facilitate development. So, property owners can get together, consolidate lots if they are proposing an affordable development and it will drive that more, better projects by having the lot consolidated. Under this one, we are also providing incentives, um, a maximum of three if you're proposing an affordable housing project. We also are requiring that you have a minimum of 16 units for consolidation and a minimum of the 30 dwelling units to the acre in order to qualify to use these incentives and to lot consolidate. In exchange for that, the city would be offering increased lot coverage. They would be reducing landscape requirements, reducing certain setbacks. They would be reducing parking or providing parking alternatives such as tandem parking. They would be reducing group open space or usable open space on a lot. And they would have the allowance for a small lot subdivision in the city, establishing a 4,000 square foot minimum if they wanted to do a small lot subdivision. So with that, that's a summary of the steps and I'm going to turn it back over to Elizabeth for what's coming next for your housing implementation.
Okay. All right, first, any questions?
Sorry, Mayor, just one more slide to go through.
Oh, okay.
Actually, a couple more.
Oh, you swapped it, okay, that's where it was, okay. Sorry.
So originally, when we brought the housing implementation to the city council, we were originally going to do it in two phases. The first phase, again, being the rezoning and the second phase being the BMC amendments. Um, if the council approves the amendments tonight, there will actually be a third part, which is a cleanup to the part one. So, to clarify, um, after the city council adopted the, the amendment to the Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan, um, staff noticed that there was a specific planning area that was still included within the boundaries of the TOD SP. So, when staff presented the project to the council, there was an area, which I believe was area 12, that was identified in your PowerPoint presentation to be removed from the TOD and to be, um, established or put into the overlay zone. It was clear in the presentation that was the intent, however, in the document itself, the maps didn't show that area being removed. So, it's really a cleanup item, um, to bring back those maps so that you adopt the correct version of those maps. And then secondly, we did notice some formatting issues. There were tables that were formatted incorrectly. For example, one table would be split across two pages and that was, um, not intentional. And so, there is a lot of formatting changes that will be brought back to the city council as well. The content didn't change, it's just those minor tweaks. Um, so it's a cleanup item and this will be brought back to the council at a future date.
Okay.
With that, the staff recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, read by title only, we first reading and introduce ordinance number 1443, or alternatively discuss other action related to this item. And that completes our report. Um, myself, Rowena and Patty are available to answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you. Any questions to staff at the moment, at this end? Do it, yeah.
In a nutshell, yes.
Okay.
I'll also add that the council, um, when you guys approved the housing element back in 2022, um, a lot of these items were identified as items to be changed. However, the specifics, for example, some of the removal of the development constraints in the housing element, it indicated that we would, um, reduce development constraints by reducing our parking standards. Well, tonight is the actual example of how we're doing the stand, uh, changing those standards. Um, so, in theory, you've already kind of committed to the programs that are included. Tonight, we're giving more specifics in terms of what's been changed.
Can you put back up that slide just before this one that talked about the transit, transportation oriented, the TOD SP? Now, I'd kind of forgotten until we had last week some testimony given by constituents that were concerned for parking on Main Street and they wanted to use the parking structure. Remember, one gentleman came in and says they, there's a project being developed on the corner of Orchard and Main and they will be able to put three units there because they're near the metro line and they need not provide any parking. Is it, remember that?
Yes.
Now, how far from the metro line does that process include? How, is it 100 yards, 100 feet? Uh, do we know?
It's actually a half mile. It's a half mile radius from that transit stop, so.
That gets you to Flower Street, you know?
Yes, it's a good portion of your downtown, um, both going north and south of where the proposed transit station will be located, which is pretty much right across the street from the parking structure.
That's interesting. So, you were planning for development based on a line that doesn't exist?
Correct. Unfortunately, the way that the state law is written is that if it's in a regional transportation plan, which the future metro station is already included in SCAG's plan, it's counted as a major transit stop. Um, so, that is correct. That is a state law. Any development within a half mile radius of that site would be exempt from any parking standards.
So that would include Eucalyptus and Cornuda as well?
I believe so.
Parts of it, yeah.
And we have the map, um, available here. You can't. You can't really see the side streets.
Yeah, that's it there, that lower one, that lower circle.
Yeah, that's pretty intense.
That's Alondra where the little curve is it, right there? That's Alondra. Wow. You see the railroad tracks going right through it. That kind of figures it out, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could just tag-team what the comments made by Beth. As you know, the Housing Element, the plans for implementing the Housing Element, the discussions all last year, all were before November of twenty twenty-four. November twenty twenty-four, the city became a charter city. And one of the primary reasons that the city became a charter city is, of course, to try to provide some argument at least against the central planning being managed by Sacramento. So Beth is correct in everything that she's said. I only add this asterisk to it, which is, if the City Council wants to fight the fight that, for example, Huntington Beach is fighting with Sacramento, you certainly have the ability to do that now. Just want you to be fully informed about your decision-making without any comment on it other than that, which is, we are in a different world now between being a general law city before November and now being a charter city after November.
So are you saying that if we were to elect to say, we don't want to endorse what is being presented tonight, which would be the first step towards doing a Huntington Beach lawsuit? I'm going to say lawsuit, but I'll say, we're not going to agree with what has been presented by the state. Now would be the time to do that.
Now is an opportunity to provide direction for us to prepare documents for you to consider to do that, yes. That is a very lawyerly way of saying yes. But I can't do that on the fly at the moment because certainly the documents that are in front of you were prepared as if we were still a general law city. And then if the council wants to go down a different road, then certainly that's something that we can do, but it would require additional preparation.
Now, are we under any time constraints as to how we have to respond to this and approve or disprove it?
You are from the standpoint of what's been put into the Housing Element. And as you know, you have a certified Housing Element. So the conventional wisdom would be to follow that Housing Element and the timelines that have been implemented within that Housing Element because, as you know, it's an arduous process to go through the certification process with HCD. So, yes, we are under some time constraints. That said, certainly, your charter states that by ordinance, you can contradict state law, which is allowable under established California law and notwithstanding what the legislature's belief in the matter. It's actually only the California Supreme Court that can make determinations of what actually applies to charter cities, not the legislature.
So if a group of charter cities would say, this is not acceptable through the contract cities, for instance, if there was a poll taken, if you're a charter city and you're opposed to this, let's hire the right representation to represent all of us to not just stand alone. Would that be a possibility?
That is certainly a possibility. I cannot tell you the outcome of that and you won't know the outcome of it until probably five to six years from now.
So if, so we could put this off for five or six years?
That would not be my recommendation. My recommendation is if you want to take that, that position, then give direction tonight so that we can come back with regulations that could be adopted pursuant to the city's municipal affairs provision of the city charter that would be more defensible than what is presented to you tonight. But that's not what I'm recommending. I just want to make you fully informed about, about your decision-making process tonight.
Well, my thought was because so many projects are in jeopardy because of the new presidential administration, there's no guarantee that the funding would become available to do this Metro East Line that we're looking at. If that were, the money would evaporate, the line would evaporate, then there would be no reason for us to have this kind of regulations because we don't have a transit corridor. And that's still in the balance. There's no guarantee that line's ever going to be built unless they got funding for it.
I will simply state that I imagine that folks in Sacramento may have a different opinion on that. Let's put it that way.
Possibly, but I, you know, the mother's milk of this project is funding. And no one said to me yet that, hey, we've got the dough and we're ready to go.
And Mr. Creep, if I might clarify, some of the things in this certainly are related to your transit project or projects, transit area, I suppose. But some of them are, I mean, all of these come out of your Housing Element. Some of them are related to the transit area, some of them are not, so they're not altered.
No, I get that. But when I look at the AE zone, which is always kind of a sacred area, you can see the possibilities there. Forget the AE zone because that's all going to be circumvented by the potentials of having, you can consolidate properties, have thirty units there, no landscaping, very little parking. The height can be forty feet, it can be almost on the property line. All those things are going to change forever, which will destroy what we now have as an AE zone. And I guess it's true of all the other zones too are going to be modified. But that, that's bothering to me because we became a charter city so we could have some backbone on these things. But if we have, if there's a why in the road tonight, I don't want to approve something that puts us in jeopardy to be able to go forward and try to oppose this. That's my only concern. Anybody else got anything to say?
Just for clarification, City Attorney, in terms of the route towards this, is it better to adopt this resolution now and then make the amendments later so that, one, we're compliant with our Housing, Housing Element and that gives us more time? We're not under pressure to make the changes tonight?
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's exactly what I was going to recommend is if you want to, to take a different path, then move forward with what's being proposed, but give direction to staff. So I apologize for muddying the waters along those lines. I'm not saying don't take any action. Take the action to implement your Housing Element along the lines of what's already in the Housing Element. But tonight's the night to give direction to staff if you want to explore different possibilities because this is the time period for doing that.
And we could just word that in, if we choose that or whoever does makes a motion or whatever.
Right, right.
It could be worded in there. Can we leave out, I mean, would you recommend leave out the transit part of it? Because that's just, that was like the camel, the straw that broke the camel's back when you see those big circles. Oh my God. It's already bad and it's like really bad.
No, and you can see that corner lot we talked about, that sold for seven hundred thousand dollars. And I thought, now what can they put there and make money on? Well, they put three units with no parking.
Yeah.
Now, I'm buying that because I'm going to get on a train that doesn't exist?
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Beth, does this include like bus stations or anything like that?
That lower circle, I believe, is, is the circle that you don't have to have parking anywhere within a half mile of that train station.
So it's not just train stations is my point, is that.
Buses? Oh, this is just the train station.
These are, these are just the train stations. So the, the transit corridors is more than trains. Transit quarters include bus stops with, I think it's fifteen or twenty minutes, I forget off the top of my head exactly.
Lakewood Boulevard, Artesia Boulevard?
So this map does not represent all of the transit districts that we're talking about. I mean, I have jurisdictions where the entire city is covered.
Oh, wow.
Who determines where the bus stops are, the city or the transit company?
It depends on the jurisdiction. I forget what it is here, metro.
If I may, if I may, the way that the legislature has gone is most of the legislation has come back as major transit stop. Generally, that's where you are at a fifteen-minute interval. Now, that can be one-way or it can be the crossing of two routes so that you have the ability to transfer or ride a route and they come at a fifteen-minute interval. Very few cities, other than dense cities, have that actually as a possibility. So it can be a metro link and a train station, but it can also be just regular bus routes or it can also involve if you have like a citywide dial-a-ride service that corresponds with a major route. So it's a combination of all three, but that's the way that the legislature has been going is they define it as a major transit stop.
Well, now we got the whole town involved. I mean, if we go back to dial-a-ride and the Bellflower Express and all the things, we have transit on almost every street in Bellflower, major thoroughfare.
You do, but they don't meet the fifteen-minute interval.
All right, but I know that this is a lot and there's a lot more to come.
What's an example of that? Let's say, is it, let's say, Artesia and Lakewood would be an example of that?
So based off of the information from SCAG, which actually plots the high, it's called the HQTA area, this is the only area in the city of Bellflower that meets that, that requirement.
The train station.
Correct. So this is the only one that actually meets the definition of a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop.
I see, okay. So it's limited.
And if I may jump in here, that, that's not just, in that area, it's not just the planned metro. There is buses that meet that criteria within that circle, within that, and that's what creates that actual transitive and development as it exists because you have the corridors of Alondra and Bellflower Boulevard.
So that circle represents the station plus a half-mile radius.
Right, but within that area is where the bus stops are that meet that fifteen-minute requirement.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So there's no other areas.
There's no others, yeah. Unless they put, unless they center the circle where that bus stop is.
Right.
Then it grows.
What determines is the line or the station on the metro?
The time. It's the fifteen-minute stop.
No, but, you know, we've had discussion about whether or not we wanted to buy into having a forty million dollar station.
Oh.
If we didn't go for a forty, would that change the scenario? Say, get on an Artesia.
So there won't, there won't be any circle anymore? If you don't have a station, there's no circle, right? Is that correct? If you don't have a train stop in Bellflower, there won't be a circle anymore?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let me suggest this, which is, consider what's in front of you. If it seems okay, take appropriate action and then provide staff a direction on your concerns with regard to things that we can come back to you on to provide you with in-depth analysis of where you might be able to go or where you might not be able to go. So for example, the, the train stuff, that's, that's subject to what's called intergovernmental immunity, which means that a separate governmental entity owns those transit corridors and our zoning doesn't necessarily apply to it. So that presents a challenge even despite the discussion about general law versus charter city. That, that's an ongoing doctrine with regard to those types of, of transits and that type of property ownership. So if this is an issue with regard to the parking regulations, then let's list that as a parking regulation and have us come back to you with, with an analysis at a future agenda meeting and we can talk about it at that point.
Okay.
Tonight's agenda item really has to do with implementation of your Housing Element. And as Ms. Oba already mentioned, to some extent, you've already committed to that from adopting the, the Housing Element in the first place and getting it certified. So I think it would be more prudent to move forward with the things that are being suggested tonight and then give separate direction to staff on anything that you raise concerns about.
That sounds reasonable.
One, one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
In terms of the Housing Element, we, we cannot pick and choose the programs that we want to implement, right? It's, it's all or nothing. So basically, if we, if we decide not to implement this TODC, TOD section, we don't have that option.
Well, you always have an option. The question is, what are the consequences of not, not implementing?
Right?
I, I would not recommend just opting not to adopt the program. Now, at some point, if you want to go down the path of exploring whether or not to un-adopt that program, we can certainly look into that. But as of tonight, we do, we do have a timing element involved with the overall program that we need to adhere to. And you can always discuss about tweaks to it on the back end of things.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
That makes sense there. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a bunch of questions regarding the presentation itself. If we may, Ms. Oba, could we go to page five of the presentation? Or slide five? On this section here specifically, we talk, this mention about removes development constraints. So when I'm reading this, this is, the intent is to improve the process or to remove barriers to actual development, correct? So then when I go down here, when we go down here to the proposed amendments, wait, can, can I get an answer on that for the record, please?
Yes, Councilmember Sanchez, that is correct.
So when we go down here to the proposed amendments to include without limitation, can you explain to me, or can you explain why a change to the maximum allowable square footage that would put restrictions on the size and then also the restriction on conversions or new construction rather than a combination of the two scenarios which we have been implementing and using for a while now? To me, this is creating constraints.
Yes, Councilmember Sanchez, so let me first clarify. Currently, we have an ADU ordinance in our code that is outdated. It was adopted, I believe, in twenty twenty and it is outdated. It's not in compliance with the current laws. So instead of coming up with our own ordinance, which the state law allows us to do, we essentially dropped our city ordinance and adopted the minimum state standards. And so what you see here are those minimum state standards, which is the eight hundred square feet and the number of allowable ADUs for multifamily lots. So the reason why we dropped our ordinance is because the state changes their laws quite frequently and we can never stay ahead of all of those changes. So instead of coming up with our own ordinance, we essentially are reverting to the state code.
Understood.
The changes that you also see, the reason why we do have a section still related to ADU is in relation to the application process if somebody wants to propose an ADU. It still has to be submitted to the city. It goes to the planning department. There's a specific address assignment that we included. But essentially, all we're doing now is saying, state, we're complying with your, with your law. We no longer have our own code.
Correct. And so in that case and in, and in this scenario, does the implementation of that lower bullet point contradict the statement previously mentioned?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
So the original comments that I've made is removes development constraints, right? The idea that it simplifies and makes things a little bit more accessible, correct? Currently, we are able to use the combination of two scenarios in one application. What this is doing, when I say one application, is one permit application, correct? What this is doing is now saying that we, that has to be separated into two applications?
No, so what this is seeing is that it, the maximum, so so currently, we do allow for two scenarios, conversion of twenty-five percent of ADUs or, and construction of two detached units. If we refer to, if we eliminate our code, which is actually, well, if we revert just to the state code, it's one or the other. And I'll also add that there was another state law that became effective earlier this year that for multifamily lots, you can have the same amount, for multifamily lot, you can have the same amount of units that already exist there not to exceed eight. So for example, if you had a ten-unit apartment complex, you cannot exceed eight, so you can have a maximum of eight ADUs. So it already establishes that maximum number of new ADUs that can be built or converted. If you had six existing units, you can build up to six ADUs on the lot. So with the, I understand what you're seeing and at the same time, there is already a, a law that's in place that allows more flexibility for multifamily units.
Interesting. Okay.
Is that kind of clarified?
I hear you. So we're adopting a more restrictive approach?
I don't think it's a restrictive approach. It's essentially.
It's choose one or the other pathways, essentially. There's no more flexibilities.
Correct. It's either you, well, you can build up to eight, which would be the, the most flexible.
Right, so you could, you could either choose that path or a least restrictive path if you wanted to at any given point in time.
So, does state basically just gives you the option of converting existing space, which is twenty-five percent of the multifamily, uh, units, or build the detached structure as mentioned by Director Oba? So there is, and, and some of the constraints that have been removed by adopting, or rather, by defaulting to the state law on the ADU, is, for example, there is a distance requirement between primary dwelling unit and ADU. So those are the things that are no longer going to be applicable, since we are now just adopting, or rather, we're now just defaulting to the state law on the ADU portion.
Very good. Okay, and then we're, uh, switching topics, are, uh, speaking specifically to the zoning. The AE zone and the R1 zone, the low-density residential zone, the, they are not going to be impacted by the transient-oriented development. They're way outside, most of that is outside of the, uh, transient-oriented development. One, two, the parking restrictions still apply to those zonings, correct? And they're still, uh, heavy, or they're still sufficient, uh, of restrictions. The, there's only, can, there's only a minimal amount of reduction. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
So, um, under the removing the development constraints of Program thirteen, um, what we are actually proposing is to decrease the number of parking required for, uh, multifamily projects. So currently, a multifamily project would need to provide two-car garage for the first two bedrooms, and then additional parking space for every bedroom after the first two, plus guest parking space for each unit. So what we're proposing here is actually just eliminating the parking requirement associated with the additional bedrooms after the first two, which is in line with other jurisdictions that we surveyed.
Wonderful. And does the, the zoning still remains for the lot size of a, of a plot of land in the AE remains at, is it five thousand or ten thousand?
The minimum lot size for, um, AE lots is ten thousand square feet with a density of one dwelling unit for every nine thousand nine hundred square feet.
Okay. And if there were to be a pla, so, so again, I'm bringing that up because that zoning will still be able to pretty much maintain most of its integrity, because the only way to go outside of that would be to go through a plan development agreement or, or, or elaborate. How have certain developers been able to do what they have done in that AE zone?
Sure. Um, aside from possibly non-conforming conditions where they built prior to the density being in place, which is one dwelling unit for every nine thousand nine hundred square feet, um, another portion was previously, we did allow for planned development projects and residential planned development projects in the AE. However, several years ago, we have, um, removed that restriction, or we have removed that component to where no longer can somebody in the AE have a planned development project, and planned development project means a subdivision of the land where some of the, um, newly created lots do not have a direct front, street frontage. So that is no longer applicable in the AE zone.
Right. That, and I, and I remember that very vividly because I was on the planning commission, and I was very supportive of doing that. That's, we, we implemented that ten thousand square foot, um, minimum requirement to protect that area. Um, I'm gonna say that very, um, I guess, straightforward, because I, I do believe that cer, certain zones should remain certain zones, right? The AE had been, was in danger, I would say. There were a lot of development happening prior to that put in place, and it needs to maintain its integrity as an AE zone. At the same time, we have a housing crisis, we have a housing shortage, and we need to build in other areas to support economic development, to have more body heat in certain areas, specifically our downtown. And I'm saying that because the ideal situation would be that this, you know, for the future of Bellflower, in my opinion, is that that transit does come to Bellflower, that that stop does come, because we need it. It will support, it will help support the economy in this downtown of Bellflower. And I'm, wanna remind everyone here that a lot of people nowadays, especially in, in my age group, do not commute to work. We work and live and play in the city that we live in. That is why the ninety-one units that were built here on Main Street are always occupied, or they are occupied, and they occupied very quickly, and they are high rental rates, might, might I add. And I'm saying that specifically to not discourage us from building in specific zones. We ought to be building in certain zones where it makes sense. That is the key importance about local control, and we are members of contract cities, and that's what we talk about, local control. Let's protect the zones that need to be protected, while at the same time allowing for density in the areas that need to have density. We are doing it. We did it with the multiple projects on the, on the Boulevard. We've done it with other projects on the side, and, and I believe that we are, we've made those strides and have supported the businesses, but we need to do more of it in that downtown. That is part of the transient-oriented development. The world has shifted, it is shifting, it's gonna continue to shift. High-paying jobs, people are working from home. We don't need cars as much anymore. So just wanted to throw that in there. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion for the, open the public hearing from somebody.
Mr. Mayor, before I do that, I just make a, ma, make a comment.
Okay.
After everything is said and done here, I just kind of, I was just, I just thought about this. We're now on the eighth cycle of RENA, and we're now almost in the middle of this eight-year cycle, and we're still doing a lot of things to implement, to implement RENA. So in the next couple of years, you're gonna be starting talking about the ninth cycle again.
Yep, all over again.
It's just, it's amazing. So I just wanted to share with you, because I think, if I remember correctly, the eighth cycle started in twenty twenty-one, and it ends in twenty twenty-nine. It's now twenty twenty-five, and we're still talking about it. Anyway, Mayor.
A lot of us, a lot of us playing catch-up.
I know. I'm making motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Also, I can, oh.
You got a motion, a second on the floor? Without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody out there want to chime in on our discussion? Good evening, Fred.
Good evening. I just have one comment regarding the downsizing of the homeless shelter. Uh, we normally have, what, a capacity of around fifty, and, uh, this forces us to reduce it down to thirty?
No.
I thought there was...
That was for a new one. That's before, for building a new one.
Oh, for a new one.
Emergency, called an emergency shelter, yeah.
It doesn't affect the existing one?
Yeah.
Okay, my misunderstanding. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Fred.
James Cody Burke, resident of Bellflower.
Good evening again.
I recognize some of you guys. Um, I appreciate, uh, the, um, depth in which the city council is, is looking at this housing element. Um, it's really obviously critical to, um, everybody in, uh, Bellflower, how our city grows. Um, I wanted to, because we're talking about trains and, and transit, I, I wanted to make sure that we had some, uh, uh, input on that one, um, as it relates to city getting, the city getting its train back. Um, for a long time, I've been really a big advocate, uh, for that. I know my wife started about twenty years ago advocating to Metro that they not pass us up. Um, unfortunately, um, the West Santana branch, as we used to call it, has been, uh, deprioritized, um, as wealthier communities have realized that bringing a train in raises their land values. They've been able to cut in line and put us kind of at the back of the list. So I'm very sympathetic to your point, Councilmember Coops. We keep getting moved down the line, and who knows how the funding will be, um, when it finally becomes our, our turn. Um, that being said, um, it is my hope that if we're gonna have new housing, that we put it in a responsible location. Responsible location would be where there's a lot of opportunities to, um, have less cars, as you pointed out, Councilmember Sanchez. Younger generations have less cars than, um, those of us. I have a few cars, I've, nothing wrong with that. But in Southern California, we tend to say there's no parking, when it's like, it's just harder, farther away to walk. Um, and I'd like to think that we would have a diversity of options in our city that include, uh, more pedestrian-oriented areas as well as, um, uh, areas that maybe still prioritize cars. I live in the big fat dot that was on the, on the screen there, and I, I, I think it'd be great to include more pedestrian-oriented opportunities instead of cars. So the people over cars thing, uh, I think will be helpful. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Burke, so would you find, I know you live, where you live on Maple, if the neighbor sold out and built six units right next to you and provided no parking, would you have an issue with that or not?
Well, right now, um, my neighbor actually has three, uh, two-bedroom units on a lot smaller than mine, and with no parking.
And so if that were to occur, you're still confident that you can live there as you have been?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do. I think there's a couple pieces to that. One is, those units were built there in, um, in the nineteen twenties as workforce housing, um, at a time when Bellflower and the surrounding areas had farms, and a lot of the farm workers had to walk to work. Um, Bellflower has a lot of that old fabric, which is really nice, because people can still walk to work. Um, you can access downtown from where I live very easily, stumbling distance from downtown, as s, somebody once joke, jokingly said to me. I think the, um, I, I think that it's important that we understand that as people, um, as it becomes harder to park, people change their habits, so that they will say, well, look, I, and we don't need three cars, because we live in this part of town, it's better for us to walk, have two cars and, and walk instead. So, for example, the idea that we need to have more than minimum two, uh, uh, dedicated parking spots per unit seems like something that I would have assumed we would have adopted anyway.
Well, you know, on the ones they're proposing, they won't even have one. I mean, you, they're dependent on the street parking, if they have a car.
Yeah, I've lived in a lot of cities like that, uh, and a lot of them are, the, the reason why I, I am not afraid of that is because a lot of them are really delightful places to live. Um, and a lot of times, we go to those places as tourists, and we say, like, wouldn't it be nice to live here? Um, not realizing that, you know, our friends that move there actually kind of park down around the corner, they, you know, rent a, rent a parking spot down, down the way, but they use it once, their car once a week, because they're, they have everything they need within a short walking distance, and it's a, especially if weather like we have, it's a nice place to live.
No. And historically, when Bellflower developed, Cornuda and Eucalyptus, where the parking requirements were one unit, one parking space, and that was all fine when it was new, and you had brand-new tenants and young married couples that were gonna aspire to live, work, and play here, buy a home, but that changed where it became more of a lesser rent value, where you got people that really weren't as, more takers than givers for less than a, just to make it simple. So we, without thinking, created a slum over there, that we've been working with as the highest crime area. Now, we've kind of gotten ahead of it over the last few years, but that was all driven by a minimal parking and a high density, and we paid the price.
So your belief is that, that those areas are impacted around rents simply because of the parking requirement?
I think because they rent for less money, they get a lesser tenant that is more in, inclined to do bad things, and, uh, that's my concern, is that not everybody is gonna be a homeowner, and I need to have quality rentals here. Now, Mr. Sanchez went into it. The project there on Bellflower Boulevard, uh...
The Edgeway.
The Edgeway, three thousand dollars a month for a one-bedroom, one-bath, and they filled the place up. Two-bedroom, thirty-five hundred, three-bedroom, four thousand, not a problem. And the people that moved in there, they tell me, were primarily off Flower Street, Maple Street, all, all along that corridor. They said, let's upgrade. And when you go in that place, it looks like Las Vegas there. I mean, they've got a pool, they've got a sauna, they've got a dog run, they've got dog wash. I mean, it is really upscale. And I, and when we create these things, our hope is that they always stay that way, you know, that we didn't create something fifty years from now. And that's how, you know, when we were on planning commission, we're always looking at something, how is it gonna be fifty years from now?
Mr. Mr. Coops, if I can jump in there, because I think this is a great conversation. What the Edgeway has done, if you, if you drive down now on Bellflower Boulevard, and I know you do, you can see that Steelcraft is a little bit busier now...
Right.
...throughout the days, and that's from people that live in that new development.
And I was reluctant to make Bellflower Boulevard more residential-oriented, because I always believe that's a retail thing. But Amazon killed that for us.
Yeah. And, and the, the last thing I would, or not the last thing, but the one thing I would say is this, I think our jobs, or planning staff's jobs, is making sure that the, the projects that are being developed, like in the case of the Main and Oak, that's Main and Oak, correct? Main Street and Oak, Main and...
Bellflower Boulevard and Oak.
No, Main and Oak is the, the three units, the three units that...
Main and Orchard.
Main and Orchard.
Main Orchard, right.
Main and Orchard, that project specifically, if you look at the design of that...
Mm-hmm.
...it is very beautifully done. It's very architecturally done, it's well-done. I, I, I think that is the key component, is how they are developed, how are they architecturally designed. I agree with Councilmember, or Mayor Protem, uh, Sunny Inez, I don't want boxes.
Right.
Right? So the development, how they are developed, is the key component here. If this area is developed properly, designed well, i, it will create a more vibrant downtown to...
Resident.
Resident Burke.
Thank you.
I know, I was gonna say it, I was gonna say...
That's your neighbor, for heaven's sake.
No, no, I was gonna say, well, I didn't know, I was gonna say his other position.
He's a resident right now.
He's a resident right now.
Why don't you call him honorable, right?
Oh, right, exactly. I didn't wanna, I was, that's what I was trying to stop myself from doing. Um, the, the, and I too live i, in that bubble, by the way.
Right.
Um, and, and we thrive off of that. I, I, I have, there's also other developments on our block that have that similar design. Uh, the one on our corner lot, I mean, is three units, and you can't even tell, really.
Everybody just thinks it's a mansion.
It just think, it looks like a mansion. I mean, it looks great, it looks well-done, right?
Rather modern, but great.
Very modern, uh, but it improves the neighborhood, it improves the value in the area, it really does do it, do its service.
But they got a two-car garage.
But they, and they have the two-car garage, actually.
A three-car garage, okay.
No, they have two-car garage for three units.
Yeah, and it's okay. I haven't, anyways, um, my point, what I was trying to make is that, I lost my train of thought. Um, the point that I was trying to make is that our focus should be how that area is designed, architecturally done, because that's gonna be the key component. If we allow just any type of design, where it's a square-like box, or things of that nature, or don't allow for open space, i, it won't work. But if it allows for, I would rather than put their effort and dollars into designing something well, that looks good, that is gonna upkeep the value of the neighborhood, and allow for more people to live in the area, who will walk to the downtown. We walk to the downtown, we don't drive, I never drive to the downtown, unless I'm coming from somewhere far, and I'm coming back into town. Um, my point was that if we want, to Mr. Burke's point, to develop a downtown where people want to come visit as a travel destination, even if it's for just a day or two, right, they're not maybe staying here, or maybe they are, that maybe they're staying at, at our new hotel, or they just want to find something attractive to come in, to eat, to put some dollars into our economy here, we're gonna need to create a little bit more of a bustling downtown that's gonna require some density.
No, I agree with you. But you're a perfect example. Twenty years from now, fifteen years from now, you currently have two-point-seven boys, that are all gonna have vehicles.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm gonna bring up. The problem is, is parking, and I went through it, and I know you went through it.
Right.
Well, my kids, my kids have stayed at home till their early twenties, and they both had cars, and the old wife had a car, that's four cars. I was fortunate, because it's a seventy-five-foot-wide lot. In your area, a lot of houses are only fifty-foot-wide lot, lots, and where are the cars? And the ADUs are going in there, and then all of a sudden, they don't have parking. And you got kids, are they gonna drive? I bet they are. They're gonna take themselves to work if, you know, unless they can get a remote. And Cody, you, you got some kids, too, or they gonna, they gonna get cars, too?
They're gonna take the train. They're gonna ride the train. They're gonna ride the train to downtown LA.
Here's the thing, if, if it weren't...
You gotta think of the future.
Okay.
For, for, just to kind of clarify, as, as we, where every city council is working through parking in some way or the other, it's part of us growing up as a city. I think the... I think the, I think the, the way that I want to voice the look at parking is that if it were only a matter of whether to have parking of X amount for free or not, certainly more parking would be preferable. However, we're only six square miles, we're not getting any wider. And so how much space we're using, how much of our city we're using for car storage, I think is one of those things that we're, we have to be able to have some thoughtfulness about prior, when we prioritize car storage over people or bedrooms or living rooms or even green space. There's definitely a lot of amazing, or not, there's a lot of cities that you wouldn't think are very amazing, that are very slummy, because I'm not using any specifics, that have a lot of pavement and a lot of parking. And I don't think having a ton of parking automatically gets us what we want. I think, like you said, council member, being thoughtful about exactly how we design, but making prior, making parking a component of that rather than the top component of that, I think will be important as we grow our downtown.
So you, you for three units with no parking?
In a certain location, perhaps, yeah.
I'm just saying, I just, Orchard and Main.
I'm wondering how.
It's a beautiful architect, beautiful home, I get it, the architect should be there, but when that happens and then the neighbor has a couple of kids driving and the other neighbor has a couple, you know, every, Sonny's lived in his neighborhood, Dan's lived in his, I've lived in mine, I don't know about Wendy. And, and if the kids are, you're in a younger neighborhood and they're all starting to drive, right? You got more cars. And that's what happens.
But there, I think the thing is, there's no way to build more units without having some concession on how we do parking. Like if it's only going to be in driveways, we'll just never get there.
But that's what the discussion was, that's what Dan was talking about all, it was the parking.
No, this is a great discussion.
It's the parking.
But Dan, did you walk through the Edgway's parking structure?
Yes. Yeah, and then you, you were last week and the lady's got two spaces and she wanted to park in the parking structure.
Yeah, it's, it's not full, right? So you've got these.
No, it's never is, so there's something going on there.
And, and what they can do there is if someone, someone doesn't, isn't using their space, they can take it off their lease.
Oh, and get a discount.
And allow, yeah, and allow someone else to, to rent that space. But I mean, not trying to get into Edgway's style of doing business, to be clear, I want to be very clear, I probably, I intend to live in Bellflower for my entire life, like all of us have. We were raised here, we were born here, we've been here. I will probably end up at a certain point, living in, in the, in the AE area at a certain point, right?
Well, thanks you, you're going to run against me.
No, 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 I didn't say that, I didn't say that. I, I've got, I've got 18 years.
Dan, you're going to be on some beach somewhere.
I won't be on council at the time.
My A and E alone, you know.
All right, I'll make a motion.
No, no, my point being is.
All right, let's move on.
All right, fine.
Yeah, it's time to move on.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
No, thank you for your input.
All right, where are we, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Where are we?
We're going to, I was entertaining a motion to close the public hearing, wasn't I?
We did. There was a motion.
I did.
Most of the second. And then Dan called Cody back.
Well, because he's got a lot to say.
Anybody else rethinking, they want to come up? Come on in. We're not looking for people.
They come to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We're talking about homeless, that happened, yeah. But that's not the, the agenda item, it's not homeless. Land, land density, it's a housing element.
No.
No, no, that's not the subject.
No, not the subject.
Land use. Yeah, okay. That's, that's society, yeah, I know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, motion on the floor in a second to close the public hearing, without objection, that'll be the order.
All right. Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Still want to take a break after this is done?
No, no, yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to waive further here, first, waive first reading and introduce ordinance number 1443.
I'll second the motion.
Did you want to do any direction of staff on that or?
I think after the, after the motion, then we can give directions.
Got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem and Santinez and second by Councilmember Coops, call roll.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify that this will be as amended in the supplemental material that was presented.
Oh, yes, that's correct. As amended.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Sorry, what was the amendment?
It's paper that was on our desk here.
The red line, the red line page.
It was on your place when you walked in.
Thank you.
Red line, right.
Mayor Protem Santinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
To be clear, I'm, I'm really hesitant on, on the amendment changes.
The one that the city clerk had here.
No, not that, not that. The amendment to the.
Oh, oh, I see, I see.
The removal of the combination, the flexibility.
Your question to staff, I got it.
Right, yeah.
These are ADU builders.
The king ADU there.
I don't know about that, buddy.
Taking away parking one ADU at a time.
But that's state.
I'm doing it, it's in the right zoning.
But that's state law though.
Is that an aye?
All right. Aye.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, a little louder, please.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. All right, I have a note up here for a health break, so we're going to take a seven-minute health break and be right back.
Seven?
Yeah, seven, lucky seven.
Okay. Welcome back, guys. Okay.
In terms of the second part is the direction to staff?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I'd like to recommend that. Oh.
Victor, he's.
He's here, but he's not listening.
We're going without you, Victor. You could get staff's attention.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to direct staff to bring a staff report regarding transit-oriented development that we talked about. That will be my recommendation.
And?
Anything else? Anything else you want to bring to bring back?
Yeah, the transient portion and probably some other portions of as discussed during the meeting.
If you can give me some specifics, that might be helpful, but.
Well, in terms of.
The transient.
Development around transit-oriented areas like zero parking requirements.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the way I understand it is you would like to know what it is, how it's defined, what the current regulations are, and the pending legislation, and what potentially local regulations might be in order to address it.
Exactly.
And what options we may have.
All right.
Okay.
Well, I could put none.
We all in agreeance with that or discussion? Victor, I know you're probably on the fence or something, but you go, you go, yeah, okay.
Discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to add with regards to the amendments that were made on the square footage, minimum requirement or max, sorry, maximum allowable, and also the amendment that was made to the inability to do a combination.
Oh, you mean ADU?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, on new or conversion. Yeah. I'd like to really understand why that was made.
You want to take away more parking then?
No, no, I want to understand.
Make it more square footage.
I think what Councilmember Sanchez is referring to is the change in the square footage allowable for ADU.
Yeah, the eight hundred.
Twelve hundred to eight hundred under state law. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Said good enough?
All right. And that second one too, Mr. Smoot. The two bullet points on the same section, page five or slide five, deck five.
Okay. Eleven B. Who's got that? Is it going to be PJ? Or Public Works?
Thirteen A. Thirteen A, yes.
Oh, wow, sorry about that. I'm still stuck on eleven B. Well, I was having so much fun on eleven B, I kind of wanted to stay there.
And yes, we're the fun department, and I didn't plan to have that picture up, but we can even make parking fun, as you can see that there, so.
Yeah, that's a good-looking picture, so you know.
That's what happened to our movie theater, yeah.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you is in agreement for your approval with Kaizen Laboratories Incorporated for the replacement of the city's current recreation management system. We have a brief presentation for you highlighting the overall project, and also we have Will Harrison here with us tonight from Kaizen to introduce the company and the process we will go through to develop and go live with the new system. As outlined in the staff report, the Department of Parks and Recreation relies on its recreation management system as a critical tool for supporting day-to-day business operations. Currently, there are over 27,000 registered users who utilize the system to register for programs, classes, and events, and process and pay for their facility use permits. The current system provider has not introduced significant enhancements over the years and no longer meets the department's standards for staff efficiency and end-user usability. The current system lacks intuitive, user-friendly point-of-sale capabilities, features a difficult interface for both staff and the public, and falls short on many desirable features, many of which are only available at a premium add-on cost. Additionally, the current provider's fee structure has increased consistently without corresponding improvement in service. Your staff report outlines the significant advantages and innovation that Kaizen brings to the city, but I want to highlight a few that will be game changers for us here in Bellflower. The first one I want to highlight is their membership management system. And this is going to be key for us as we look to implement a membership system with the Oak Center for our teens and the senior centers at the center. So that piece of this entire system is going to be key for us. This platform will also have event scheduling and ticketing. And then probably my favorite component here is the advanced merchandising and point-of-sale functionality with online merchant integration. This will be a huge improvement for the city store merchandise. We will, one, have many more payment options for merchandise at events, and, two, we will finally be able to create a significant online presence for our merchandise, and we'll be exploring print-on-demand and dropshipping options as well. So we'll have two different ways that you can purchase merchandise from the city store. And then lastly, the, this system comes with the payment kiosk, and all the associated hardware comes with it, whereas all of that is an add-on with our certain systems. So that's going to come with the system. So there'll be iPads, different components that we can take out to the events with us, and have credit card readers, different things of that nature at all of our sites where we have point-of-sale. For this portion of the presentation, I want to finally mention that this new platform comes with no upfront or annual licensing costs. All fees are transactional in nature and are offset by revenue generated through recreation program registrations, facility rentals, and city store merchandise sales. And this is the same exact model as the current provider. With that, I want to hand it off to Will Harrison of Kaizen now.
Thank you, PJ. Thank you all for having me. I really appreciate being here, and I'm honored to be, to be able to speak to you guys today. To give you a little bit of background on Kaizen, the reason why we wanted to start this company, and the reason why we would love to work with Bellflower, a few reasons. If I took out my phone right now, I could book someone's house halfway across the world on Airbnb. I could sign in with my Google account, check out with something like Apple Pay, and that process would take me something like 90 seconds. And that's something that cost me a couple, a couple thousand dollars if I wanted to. Why should it be any different for reserving a tennis court? Reserving, I'm a lacrosse coach. Reserving a Ramada for a banquet or a lacrosse field for my youth team that I coach. So that's why we started this company. We wanted to bring this 2025 technology into Parks and Rec, whether it's putting my membership card on my Apple Wallet, my Google Wallet, or having a, or being able to use something like Apple Pay or Google Pay when I'm trying to buy a Bellflower Parks and Rec t-shirt or beanie. We wanted to take all these technologies that exist in the private sector and bring it to Parks and Rec, right? It's 2025, and when you introduce these kinds of technologies, it makes everybody happier, and it makes the world go round. So to give you a little bit of background on the company, we only work with about 25, 35 communities per year. Reason why is because we develop custom, tailored software. It is not out of the box, off the shelf, or anything like that. And we put together this software with a very talented team from apps and systems that we use every day, like Walmart, Amazon. Kelly, our lead product designer, helped build the, I don't know if we have any Dodgers fans or, God forbid, Angels fans here. Our friend Kelly over here developed the MLB Plus app. I'm not sure if anyone's been using it, but it's working, works, works great. But the system's going to feel very, very familiar to these, these systems that we use every single day. And the reason why we only work with 25 to 35 communities per year is because every system, every community, has different needs. Manhattan Beach, California has much different needs than Vail, Colorado, and Sarasota, Florida has much different needs than Pima County or Maricopa County, Arizona, which is why we only want to work with a certain amount of communities per year. And I mentioned and hinted at this before, but when you introduce these, these modern technologies, you will see, and remove these barriers that we're constantly facing right now with some of this outdated software, you see an increase in revenue. About 30 to 35% of the transactions that get processed through our friends over in Pima County, that's Tucson, Arizona, are through Apple Pay and are through Google Pay. I don't know about you guys, but I will go out of my way to use those systems and pay that way rather than type in my credit card information or add in my bank account information. So a lot of the communities, actually, no, every community that we work with sees a substantial increase in revenue and a decrease in the amount of time they have to spend responding to emails, phone calls from residents who simply can't figure out, how do I reserve, how do I reserve Ramada? How do I book a pickleball court or get a membership, gym membership online? So the system ends up paying for itself. And the same thing with Redwood City. They had their Oktoberfest with us this past year, and they saw a major increase in ticket sales, and most of the activity, if not all of it, was through a mobile device. And from what I understand, most of the, the traffic that goes to the current system, you have to use a desktop to use it. It's 2025. We want to develop a very mobile-friendly, easy-to-use system for folks to be able to go in and engage with the community. So I wanted to, I wanted to include this slide here because I wanted to point out that we, because we are a custom software, there is a learning curve to everything. We don't want to hand you the keys to a Porsche and say, "Good luck, have fun," if you can't even drive stick. So we do a phased approach with all of our implementations to make sure we're engaging with the community, to make sure that, in layman's terms, we're doing this right. So this is a long process. It's almost like a boot camp with the, with the team. But the reason why we do this is because we want to do implementations right the first time so that we don't have to have any friction again. And that's, that's our approach. We want to work with the community. We want to do things the way Bell wants to do it and not make you guys do the things the way we do it. And we want to do continuous improvements along the way, constantly improve, not nickel and dime you for additional modules or additional functionality. We want to do an all-inclusive, no upfront costs, no annual costs system that will, will grow with the community.
And if I could, I want to go back to that timeline and just say, this is a sample timeline.
Yes.
Working with Kaizen, you all know that our, our seasons go by how our brochure is implemented and different things like that. So it's all going to depend on the timing of this. So if we're not going to make it on a certain season, we, it may be delayed because we want to make sure this, there is no impact on the end user. So we'll be building this on the backend, and we still have our current system that'll be running as, as we progress through this. And the staff recommendation to the City Council is to authorize the city manager to execute Agreement File Number 1089 in a form approved by the city attorney or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes the presentation. I'm happy to address any questions, and Will is happy to take any comments and questions as well.
Who wants to go first?
Mr. Mayor, can I go first? Mr. Milano, Mr. Harrison, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm very impressed. First of all, Kaizen, is that a Japanese word?
Do you know what it means?
Continuous improvement.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
I Googled it.
So.
Full transparency, I Googled it. All right. I'm, I'm very impressed, very impressed.
Thank you, sir.
Going back to the current system, if I may, Mr. Milano, you mentioned that they generated $535,000 in revenues, but most of it is not through the, not, not through active, active net?
Most of it is, but not everything. So for example, there's some specialty sites. So the pool, not everything is run through the, right now, through the recreation management system. The civic auditorium here is not yet. So with the new, with the new system, we're moving anything that wasn't part of it into this.
So everything will be under this umbrella, so to speak?
Yes, yes. So that way, we're not working some, some systems by hand, some by another third-party vendor. Everything's going to be run through one system.
What is the feedback from our residents regarding the current system?
It's very difficult to use. A lot of our stuff is, is still by hand. For, for example, one of, there's a couple examples. So we've been going through an exploratory phase with Kaizen. Just, is this really what we want to do? So we had them come, they did demonstrations with all of our staff. They did demonstrations and, and feedback with the finance department, with our IT department. And there were a few things. One, if I want to, if I have more than one kid, so if I have two kids or three kids and they have different, one I'm signing up for karate, one I'm signing up for soccer, well, you pretty much have to go through the whole registration process for one kid and then do the other one. It's not intuit correct.
You have to go out of the system and lock back on?
Yes. Not log out, but in order to go back in and find it. This is very intuitive. They build it just like you would at Amazon. So you're going to go in, how many of these do you want, two? It'll, it'll actually suggest, so if you order a karate class, you're going to see a suggested, hey, do you want to buy this Bellflower shirt? Also at checkout, at the end of checkout. So you're going to see a lot of what you see in Amazon or walmart.com. It's, it's very intuitive. It's easier to add if you have multiple kids. It's easier to build your family system in there. I know several people have gone in, especially when we are trying to do tickets for, say, Bravo or State of the City. It's very difficult, so that's not integrated. We, we have to do a lot of different workarounds. We're going to be able to incorporate our picnic shelters into this system. Our demand is going to be huge when our new fields are here for field rentals, and that's going to be another big one. But the biggest thing, it just, it's hard to find stuff, to search for something, to find it on, on the current system.
In the current system, if there is a program that there's no fee, do the residents use the current system also, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we'll be able to set that. So for example, we don't know if, if there will be any, or if so, how much membership fees for the Oak Center yet. We don't know if we're going to do a non-resident fee versus free for residents, and, but it, it doesn't mean, there were, the, the cost is only going to come when a transaction is made on a financial basis, so. Yeah, we, I'm not sure for, for active net, but yeah. So with this system, he worried me right there. I thought he was saying they were going to charge. No, so for anything free, that's just going to run through the system. There, the, the costs that are to the city are only for the paid programs.
Oh, I see, okay. So, Mr. Harrison, let's say for instance that the, the volume, once we go live under the Kaizen system, let's say it stays at 535,000, just for the sake of discussion.
Yes, sir.
How much will be your fees?
About 6%, so about $30,000.
So it's 6% of total collected? So no-fee programs will be zero fee, so you're not collecting anything from those programs?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
Are you supplying the, the bank card portion of it, the 2.9% that is currently rate? Is that you, or does we get to use our existing provider?
That 2.9% plus, I think, 30 cents goes directly to the credit card processor.
But, okay, but it's the one that you offer for the years that's?
It is not included in our 6%. That is a separate.
Separate, right? Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure.
So it will come.
It's your provider, use this, we recommend using this provider, it matches up to our software.
Yes, sir.
So that's my next question. So it will come out of the city's revenue?
Yeah.
Yes.
The 2.9%.
And our fees build around that already with the current system. So.
Okay.
Both of them are very similar, and where the difference comes, so if, if I register my child for a karate class at $85, though that, the, there are several tiers that, that's laid out in, in the contract that'll add up to whatever that percentage is, including the credit card fees. If I rent a facility for $3,000 and that charge, so that percentage is going to go down. So it changes depending, so that, the, the big volume number may change depending, right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so that'll adjust depending on the size.
Based on the type of registration?
It depends on the type and the cost. So facility rentals, the city's cost is going to go down to Kaizen.
In terms of percentage that they're charging?
In terms of, okay. A regular class like soccer or karate, their percentage is going to be a little bit higher, and, and that's built into our fees.
And the 6% includes all the equipment that you will install, everything?
Yes, sir. All equipment, all training, onboarding, any additional features. It is all-inclusive, and there is no, no, no fees.
No hidden fees?
No hidden fees.
Okay. And how many clients do we have now?
Coming up on.
You showed some examples here.
Coming up on 50. Some in Southern California, including Monterey Park. We just went live with Manhattan Beach last, last Monday. Vail, Cor, Vail, Colorado, it's in Colorado. But we just signed with Santa Ana, the city of Bell. I was at their city council meeting last week. Santa Clarita, a few others up north, but yes, we've got a lot in.
It's a good range of clientele.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Very good, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Victor?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, thank you for the presentation. Some exciting stuff, ability to be able to pay with Apple Pay. My question regarding your, your cybersecurity, the data itself, what will, what, talk, talk to us about that process? What are your certifications? Do you have SOC 2? Do you, will you keep the data? Will it be sold? Stuff like that.
Yep, data will not be sold. We are ISO compliant, SOC 2 compliant, and a lot of things.
Can you, for the purpose of the audience, can you provide information as to what is SOC 2?
Yes, sir. SOC 2 essentially is for data security. I may need to delegate that to, more than happy to share a little more information about that. But essentially, SOC 2 compliance, ISO compliance is a tier of data security, just to make sure that we are not selling data, we are storing it securely, and just reducing the possibility of data leak or, or cyber attack. We are also HIPAA compliant. So for example, if a parent needed to upload something like a child's birth certificate to verify their age or medical information, that is included in, or that system is HIPAA compliant, which under the current system, I believe you would have to pay another provider to be able to even support the sensitive documentation as well. So when it comes to essentially SOC 2, even GDPR compliance, we check all those boxes.
Very good. And then on the, want to hear a little bit more about this platform with the multiple kids scenario? One parental account, sub-accounts for the children, so you can select which child is which, on whichever, whatever item you're purchasing?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Kind of like how you do your flights, who's flying? You can book who it is?
Exactly.
Perfect. Oh, that's great. Well, that's good. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's it for me.
Scoops?
How long's our contract for? It's 6%. Is that for, for annum? Five-year contract? What do you got?
It's a, it's a five-year contract, but it's, it's not annual. If we were to stop using Kaizen, they would get zero money from us because it's all on every transaction we do with their system.
But it doesn't have a sliding scale where the first year's six and next year's seven. It's 6% flat fee for five years.
Yes, sir.
And I will say this, of the other cities that I spoke to about Kaizen, we are on the lower volume end compared to some of, some of the bigger cities that they're working for. Pima County was one of them. I believe they just started for the state parks in Maryland, is that what? So we're on the lower volume right now, but I do anticipate our, our volume to go up tremendously, three-to-five-year horizon. And then after that five years, we, we would reconsider. But this, this change is not taken lightly for our department. We, when I first took over as, as director in 2012, everything was by hand, and we moved to a system like this. And it is the most essential tool that we use for our operations. So changing to a new platform is, is not taken lightly, and we, we, we know that this is the time as we're getting ready to grow, that this is the company that we want to go with. We, we, one of the key potential vendors that we interviewed and went through a similar vetting process and talked with, very new, very innovative, but they were learning. They, we were going to be the guinea pig, and I didn't want that for our department. We have enough problems. And when we met with Kaizen, they were innovative, they came out, they met with us, and they also, they weren't figuring it out as they go. They have a system in place, they have a system in place that can be adaptable to tailor the system to us, too. So we're very confident in where we're going.
Answered my question.
Okay.
Put back up the, your personnel picture.
Yes, sir.
What's your average age of employee? Looks like about 19.
We're definitely on the younger side.
If I may jump in on this? I'm going to jump in on this, I know we're off-topic on this one, but. Where do most of your employees live?
Either California or New York City. We are completely based in the United States, so if there's any.
Like metropolitan areas?
Metropolitan areas, yes, sir, yes.
High density. How many have cars, high-density areas?
Very, I don't, well. We are named, Kaizen's named after the Toyota manufacturing process, despite the fact, no one in this, in this picture owns a car because they all live in, in walkable cities.
In fact, I will say, the CEO there, Nikhil, he said on one of his visits out here that he had to go pick up his car from his sister here in LA, which is where he garages. which is where he garages it, so he doesn't drive very often.
Thank you.
He, he does have a car in a city that he does not live, though.
That's very useful. That's the American.
That city had parking for it.
But yeah, so me and a lot of the other folks in this company are based in Southern California. I was born and raised in Agora Hills, where I am a lacrosse coach, and I, in Agora, Agora High School, so I have a lot of ties to the area.
All right, that answers all my questions. Thank you.
I, how long was, how many months? You guys have already done some trial runs, so assuming this, how long do you really think it's going to take you guys to?
Well, the timeline's five. When I talked to Nikhil, we were thinking about seven, so it's probably going to be five to seven, and that, and it's going to depend on where that month falls, on where, are we falling in tree lighting month? Are we, are we falling in as we're getting our next brochure out? You know, a lot of things on the horizon with, are we falling in the middle of budget time? So it's going to depend, but we're, this is something my entire staff is motivated to do, because we know that on the other side of it, the tools for it are going to help us tremendously.
And the benefit of us being a relatively small company compared to the very large private equity-owned companies, we can work very closely with your team and move as quickly or as slowly as you want. We don't want to rush an implementation and have that be a train wreck. We want to make sure this is a smooth, comfortable transition, because we know this is the lifeblood of your organization and how important and big of a step this is. So.
And most importantly, it's front-facing.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to put my own two cents in as a purchaser of several softwares, management systems, point-of-sale systems. And this is the way it's going, because I just implemented a new point-of-sale system, too. I get to, you know, from, just from the, it's something you just don't do in one day. I'm assuming it's a cloud-based?
Yes, sir.
You know, you're all cloud-based, and so it's all in, stored in your servers?
Yes, sir. Our Amazon Web Services.
Is our hardware requirement, has that been reviewed? Are we up to speed on our hardware?
We provide all the hardware, no charge, no cost. So any additional hardware that can be used?
On PCs, I guess.
Oh, PCs, yes, it would.
Our PCs are up to speed, I guess.
Yes, it's, it's web-based, so there's no applications to download, so you're not going to, your computers are not going to sound like a 747.
So you supply all hardware such as, say, I know Mr. Milano is saying, you know, he can sell stuff at street events and city stores, so you supply the?
The iPads.
The pads, just do all the sales and stuff like that, so that's all tablets and readers?
Yes, sir.
All that.
And Mayor, if I could, Sergio, our IT manager, was in in-depth meetings with them just to vet out the system and questions back and forth. Many of the marketing components are going to be connected now where they weren't. Right now, we have to hand export emails into our emailing system, so a lot of this is just going to make life much more efficient and talking to each other on, on a lot of different systems, so.
And I know some of it was written in here, but if we decided to, you know, as, oh yeah, we, we see, we're going to start a new program or whatever and do that, to get that into your software, is it a four-week thing, a six-month thing to get it usually? It depends on the, how big the project is, I get that, but.
So it depends, there's, there's one module of theirs that we're not doing at the moment that does require licensing, and that was doing what we call special event, special park use permits, so the, the out-of-the-ordinary permits that, that come every once in a while. For right now, that wasn't worth us. Eventually, I do want to explore that down the road. One of the, and this is the other great thing about this company, is I mentioned to them, in three to five years, we may have youth sports leagues again, adult sports leagues again, and meeting with Nikhil, he said, at the moment, we are developing that for, for other users, but we're not the best. So if you were to come to him today, he would say, go with this other provider, specific for sports league management. But as those things come onboard, it'll be part of their overall system to build into it. And, and a lot of this, we'll have to change our way of operating. We may have done permits for Sims Park one way in the past, where we may have to adjust a few things, and we need to change how we do things as well. But as they're evolving, their name really does say what they mean. They, they are constantly evolving and building, and and they've been a disruptor for the, for the bigger players in, in this industry right now.
And so that, so basically, back to the credit card account, and that's with whoever you contract with has trying to think of the word, I know the word, migrated with your system?
Yes, sir.
Right, and whatnot, and so that's why you offer that one, it's a done deal.
Yeah, and it's, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's through Stripe.
Yes, sir.
So they have the Stripe integration, which is the standard bearer, and that's who is, they have partnered with to provide all the hardware for us and everything, and it's a third-party merchant, and, and we have an agreement as the city with Stripe as well, and so we're kind of ahead of the game there for, for other processors.
How does the 2.9% compare to what we're paying now, that you're paying now?
That, that 2.9% is industry standard right now, and, and that's the one rate in the contract that says if that processing rate changes, then that's the one that's going to change. The other rates that we have in the tiered system will not change for the.
You're talking industry standard with parks and rec? It's not industry standard across the, every merchant.
Well, you may have more information.
So the 2.9% fee that Stripe charges us, we don't see a penny of it, but that's pretty competitive with the, the processing, or credit card processing fee across.
That's for any card? It's just across the board?
Yes.
For all four cards?
Yes, sir.
I paid 1.8.
I know, I know what I, so it's, it's, you know, when you say it's the industry standard, I don't believe so, because I know.
Depends on the industry, I guess.
Well, it depends on the volume, it depends on your per-ticket and stuff.
Another thing I wanted to point out about that.
These are little, little charges, these are little charges. You know, they're 20 bucks here, 20 bucks there, and I knew, I know that that affects the percentage.
And like for some of those bigger ticket items, like for example, Vail, Colorado, the dues or the, the fees to book their ice hockey leagues for, 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 let's say like a three-month season are up to $20,000. They use, you can log in with your bank account like USA and, or make an ACH payment, the maximum fee for that is, I believe, $8. So for some of those larger ticket items, anything above maybe a couple hundred dollars where it might be worth to use your, your bank account instead, we just suggest that.
I never look at the credit card par, says, processes, they're going to give you this percentage rate, because it never is. When you add all the fees, I want to know what it is a total, and then do my own percentage, but that's the bottom line. So is there a bunch of, on the 2.9%, is there a bunch of other fees other than the $30 one that I saw there?
It's 2.9% and then 30 cents per transaction.
Oh, yeah. That was $30, 30 cents per transaction. Okay. I'm not getting stuck on that, I just was trying to ask questions, because it's something I do know about.
Yep.
That's all my questions.
Mr. Mayor, just one follow-up question. I understand that you're in contact with, well, finance partner was in the loop in your discussion with them. In our previous study session, we're also looking into possibility of upgrading or, or getting a new finance system eventually?
They are looking at upgrading.
Okay, so will that pose a problem in terms of compatibility, once we change our finance system?
We have open APIs, which is how different software speak to each other, so we can integrate into something like Tyler Muniz or my alma mater, Oracle NetSuite. Essentially, any ERP system that you guys would go with, we would be able to implement.
Very compatible, very, very compatible.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you so much.
Any further questions?
Nope.
Are you entertaining a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Somebody can, I'll, I'll entertain it, yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute agreement file number 1089, and it's formally approved by the city attorney with Kaizen Laboratories, Inc. for the replacement of the City of Bellflower's current recreation management system.
That's a good motion.
Second?
Motion on the floor, Councilmember Sanchez, second by Mayor Protem Santaynez. Coroll.
Mayor Protem Santaynez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Well, PJ, you got a 5-0. You're welcome.
Thanks, Will. Surprise.
We got to hear Victor's eye this time.
I, I heard it, I heard it.
I heard Victor's eye, he wasn't so reluctant.
Well, you noticed the young guy made the motion.
Yeah.
It was right up his alley. A computer, mobile genius. All right, 13B, Wong Su, this is your baby, I take it?
Yep, Wong Su's going to take this one, and we're going to move pretty quickly, and we also have some folks from the fire department here to answer any questions if you have them.
Right. Patient fire department people. I'll just, yeah.
Sing the best for last.
Well, with that said, I'll try to move through this very quickly, so that the fire folks can get some sleep tonight. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, the item for your consideration tonight is to possibly authorize the city manager or his designate to issue an encroachment permit for Fire Service Day on May 10th, 2025. If, if you all recall, Fire Service Day was held in the City of Bellflower last year in honor of the Fire Department's Centennial Celebration. Fire Service Day being a community-based event in which residents and visitors alike could gather in a place such as our downtown to learn about critical services provided by the LA County Fire Department and to see some of the cool equipment at the Fire Department's disposal. The Fire Department and the Fire Museum have requested approval to host Fire Service Day at the Fire Museum located on Bellflower Boulevard again this year, and the Fire Service Day is estimated to attract 500 to 800 people to the downtown. And to increase the safety of our residents and visitors and to provide ample space to displays, to display the fire apparatus, the Fire Department and the Fire Museum have requested a temporary street closure on Bellflower Boulevard from Main to Oak, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on May 10th, 2025, while the event itself will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Fire Museum has also requested utilization of the parking structure behind the Fire Museum that is adjacent to the Family Dentistry and the Oaks Lodge and that appliance store there to also help utilize, to display their fire equipment or whatever it is that they're utilizing that space for, and to but that request is only if all the businesses that are potentially impacted there provide approval to use that parking space. The Fire Department and the museum are responsible for the traffic control and security for Fire Service Day, and although the city was notified last minute of this request, we are trying to move very quickly to try to get this request approved for them, should city council approve of this tonight. And so effectively, if we, if the council issued or authorizes the city manager to issue this encroachment permit, we, the city will be approving Fire Service Day to be held in the Fire Museum and Bellflower Boulevard, temporarily closing the street, Bellflower Boulevard from Main to Oak, and to possibly allow the Fire Museum to utilize that parking space in the rear. And so with that said, staff's recommendation tonight to city council is to authorize the city manager or designate to issue an encroachment permit for Fire Service Day, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. As was noted before, the Assistant Fire Chief Dow is here to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
I had a question, I don't know if it was a typo or not, but it said, the parking structure behind the? The parking lot, supposed to be the parking lot. Yeah, okay, okay. That's what I thought, I just didn't read right up there. Well, thank you, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm good.
Okay.
Clarified what I needed to clarify with that.
Yeah, thank you for being here, thank you for waiting. Question for you, on the, if you can go back on the slide, on this one, so the request for the parking structure behind the?
Parking lot.
The parking lot.
Parking lot.
So the request for the parking, wait, which parking lot is it?
Behind. Behind the Oaks Club.
Behind the Oaks Club.
That's what you, okay.
Yeah, it's just a typo.
Okay, and that would be for the use of?
Equipment.
Rolling, rolling out the rolling stock out there. But you're going to roll it out front, too?
Not to interrupt, but we would shut down the Boulevard. Most of the equipment would be on the Boulevard. The back we reserve, we do keep stuff open for the dentists, so they have access to the. More so for, for VIPs that are coming in, so you folks, possibly supervisor, fire chief, stuff like that.
Oh, got it, okay.
Yeah, then that would just be blocking off a few cones.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the entire parking lot, because we, obviously we want to keep a lot of that for the business, but just for VIPs such as yourselves.
Okay, that's, that's great. Yeah, thank you.
Well, not all of us drive, you heard.
I'm walking, I'm walking it through. Okay, I have no further questions.
Good, got it.
Questions, actually? Can we, you know, I think that, that was, we have another typo there, because the amount of equipment we're bringing in, I think it's going to overgrow the size of the, the request from Main to Oak?
So we were considering Belmont, if guys would let us? Sorry, we're requesting to Belmont.
It's not about gearing.
From the musi, from Oak to Belmont?
Right, so.
So to?
Main to Belmont, is that what you're saying? Instead of Oak?
Yeah, instead of Oak, we'd extend down to Belmont.
You have that much equipment, we can fill it up?
Between the museum and the county, yes, sir.
All the counties bringing, the county's bringing stuff.
Yes.
Yes, we're going to be bringing in, our intent is to bring in our bulldozers, our, our, our.
Oh, yeah?
Fire camps, our lifeguard division, our forestry units, and as much as we can, really, and at least showcase the, the fire service.
Were, what, I was there last year. Weren't you guys even a little further towards Omega Burger also, like towards the tracks?
Correct, like, what was?
Because you had a car there.
So we shut it at Flor Vista, but we left the furthest lane by the parking structure open, so you could park in the parking structure.
Will you do that again this year, too?
Yes, that's the intent, we'd like to do that.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
So we need to change the, the motion then, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, let's get the question, let's get the answer.
Questions first, yeah. I have a question. Would you guys, leading up to the event, be able to provide signage, kind of prepping the, the community in that area for the closure?
Yes, we can provide signage, and we've got a flyer we're going to distribute.
Perfect. That was my question.
You mean on Bellflower Boulevard?
Right, yeah, you know those signs that usually notify the public that there's going to be a road closure?
Oh, like Public Works puts up?
Right, but I don't, it sounds like they want to be able to do it independently.
Well, we can, we, we're willing to do it independently, but we can use any help or assistance from the city that, that you're able to offer. We don't want to impact you financially or fiscally or anything like that.
I think Public Works has got to put up the barricades.
No, I'm talking about those signage, the.
I know, it's the paper signs.
Electrical ones?
Yeah, the paper signs.
No, he's talking about the electric.
Oh, the electric signs, oh, electric.
The ones you tow on, on.
Trailers, trailers.
Trailers, thank you.
I can, I can reach out to Sullhorst, the company we contract to shut down the Boulevard, I can reach out to them, and if you like that done, we can tell me where you want them, and I'll place them.
So you're contracting out to shut down the Boulevard, you're hiring a traffic service people?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
We incur that cost.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, so the, the, the proposal that they have to shut down at Oak already has an approved traffic control plan associated with it, and it shows all the detours and where that road goes. Extending it down to Belmont, there is not an approved traffic control plan for that, so they, they would have to get one in place because it changes all the detours quite a bit.
Yeah, because you can't use Aiden Moore no more.
Yeah, you can't use Aiden Moore, you're, you're restricting access to residents that live in the city ventures development right there. It's, it's not as easy as just sliding it down to Belmont. So we, we would have to, and I'm, and I'm more than happy to work with them. We worked, we worked last year on this, this plan. This is a plan that we already had that we use for some of our other events, so it was easy for them to do it. It's already been vetted out by us, but sliding it down to Belmont will take, take, take a little more work.
Okay, so then
What did you have, yeah, go ahead.
In essence of time, why don't we just keep the Oak plan now? And if we decide to do this again, because we keep hearing rumors they like doing it here, we'll jump off that bridge when we come to it. And I'll just, I'll make use of the real estate we have now, the way we did last year.
Gotcha, so you're going to, are, so what, what's in this report is from Oak to Main, so we're going to go in, and as heard from Ms. Morse here, last year you were to Floravista.
We started the shutdown at Floravista.
Oh, started the shutdown.
One lane open to the parking structure, so that was part of the plan.
So you have one lane open to the structure going south.
Correct.
That's what you're doing this time?
We'll retain the exact same plan we did last year, this year.
Okay.
Just to make it easier.
Public Works, what do you, is
No, that, we're, we're totally
You're on board with that, okay, it just didn't state it, it doesn't state it.
Yeah, we, that's a, that's a proven plan that, that works.
Yeah, because we're used to blocking off.
Yeah, it ju, it just becomes you have to change the detours up and like I said, now you're
What's the
You're losing access to a lot, a lot of the residential locations that live there on Aiden Moore and Oak and the, the senior housing on, on Belmont right there. So it just, it makes it a little more tougher that you have to prepare a traffic control plan for, and I don't know that we have enough time to do that.
That's fair.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're good with it, okay.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I want to follow up on that, just a question, what is the time, the leeway time that they would have needed to have that? Or to do that?
Probably a couple, couple weeks.
Let me inject myself here a little bit, the, this is a little bit of an abnormal process, normally for an event like this, we go through our temporary use permit process. Last year, we kind of wound, found ourselves in the same situation with a very short window of time to process these things, we did a similar process to what we're proposing here. This year, we kind of wound up in the same situation, my suggestion is next year we start early and we can go through that normal process, it addresses a lot of the things that I think you guys are raising. If we need to adjust traffic control plans, it gives us time to do that, but it puts all those things in a, in a more appropriate order place, so.
That's fair.
Yeah, this year we're just, we're trying to accommodate as much as we can.
Okay.
Understood, thank you.
Did you have some?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Mister City Manager, do we, do we require insurance for encroachment permit?
Yeah, yeah, we would.
Okay, so they'll provide that too?
Certainly, yeah, and the fire district is covering, covering all of these costs associated with it.
And this, and the fire chief was invited?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's coming?
That's up to him.
We hope so.
Yeah, we actually have another similar event in the city of Inglewood somewhere over there, so trying to spread these events around.
A question.
Thank you.
You good?
I'm good, I'm good.
Go ahead, Baker.
By not being able to do it all the way to Belmont, does that mean you won't have as much equipment this year? Because it was, it was a good event, it was a good event.
Everything he mentioned, we had last year, along with a lot of our antique
It was a little
Our antique stuff, it was tight. I can pare down some of the antique stuff to just showcase what county's bringing. And we'll just open our doors and what we have inside the building is what we'll showcase.
Well, and this will be your second year, so third year, you know, hopefully you can, we'll keep growing with you.
That'd be great, I'd advocate for this, because we move it around and, you know, when we started out, we had it over in City of Industry, it went till up, went there and various locations and we used to have it at our fire station and we outgrew that and I love doing it here just because it's tied into the, the museum and you guys have it beautiful downtown, so.
Two years in a row, so is this the first time, is this the first time it's been the same place two years in a row?
No, it is, no, it's not, but yeah, it all depends on, on where we're being directed to go, basically.
Just follow up question, when you say you're being directed by whom?
My superiors, they, they sometimes the direction is, hey, let's just try to keep it in this location, or they might have a pull from another city somewhere who they want in their
Oh, I see, I see.
Their city or at least somewhere close, because this is a regional event and it's supposed to encompass everything from the Sangreal Valley on down to Signal Hills, so if people in Sangreal Valley want to come to this event, they'd have to come down to six oh five and come here.
But this is the best place in the county though.
I, I, I think so, I love it here, it's great, it's a great spot and I'm not being, I'm not patronizing, it's a, the museum and that downtown area is very nice.
Exactly, okay.
So.
The museum, the museum people don't have to haul that stuff to the other places.
I have questions. Every time I come to say one, you, I got one more. Are you going to have any kind of a program out there in front, or is that not part of the program?
We, we intend to have a program, I believe one of the museum, Paul already just got a
Our president will speak and open it up, we'll do like we did last year, maybe not bang the drum on the hundred years so much, but we are going to do some sort of a program.
We'll have some bagpipers and things like that, so.
When you know, we're so proud of that museum, we can, we're, and we're proud of you. And when Sonny was mayor, and what was the event that they were timing?
That was the, the, the hot shots. The membranes.
Yeah, the nineteen.
And it hadn't timed at a certain, it was the middle of the night somewhere else and it had to be at the same time or something.
Something like that, yeah.
What I'm trying to say is the city council has put a lot of investment and honor in that, making sure you're here. We don't always feel when we're there, we are recognized. And Sonny was the one that brought that out to me, you know, we're there, no place to sit, no recognition, we're just a regular attendee and we're, we feel slighted when we're not recognized. Am I complaining to the wrong people?
Not at all, well, no, not at all.
Can I comment on that, sir?
Please.
So I remember that event and I apologize and that was a foresight or a mis sight on our board and that's been addressed and that will not happen again.
So when, I don't know how many of us are coming, all five of us, three of us?
You're all invited.
Right, and very well be there, and if you're offering a parking place behind the building, cool, never had that before that I know of.
But I think recognition's more important than a parking spot.
No, I get it, but it's nice to know that you, we honor you and we like for you to reciprocate, but we're proud of the fact that we got this thing pulled off which took ten years.
No, I, I totally understand, sir, I do.
And I'm working with Joe now to see if he can acquire the Elks Hall, so
That's the hope.
Yeah, we're all pointing in the right direction and this council is not going to be here forever, you know, this is a council that supports what's going there and we enjoy it and you guys enjoy us, but we just need to know that you're not ashamed of us.
Oh, not at all, sir.
Not at all, it's, it's, it's foresight and unfortunately I wasn't here last year and unfortunately I won't be at this event because I'll, I'll be out of state, but I'm going to make sure that
But I'm glad you recognize what we're saying.
That will be absolutely, one hundred and ten percent.
Where the seating was, you were overcrowded, there was no place to sit, no recognition and poor old Sonny here, he said to me, Dan, this is wrong.
Not to make, not to make light of it, don't feel bad because we even told the supervisor she couldn't speak for that event, just that was for the hot shots that were
Well, she didn't vote for it.
Right.
Kenobi did.
You guys did, and I thank you and
But if, if I may
I have no excuse.
If I may, said during the program that they were scrambling for something to say, because they were, they were waiting for something and they were just killing time.
Right.
They were filling the gaps.
It was a little disorganized.
So, oh, we work on that, you know?
We're not, we're not pros at this at all, we're not, as you can tell, we're not pros at this at all.
Are you done embarrassing the volunteers?
Put fire in front of us, we know what to do, but
And we're not asking for the sun, the moon, the stars, I mean, we don't want to skyride or anything else, but just, they're here. Well, it was cool when the helicopter came over.
And you'll have that again this year.
Right.
Oh, good.
Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention because that's things that, that we just don't understand sometimes as
And you're going to have a banner across the Boulevard like you did historically?
No, we didn't do a banner last year.
Didn't you, I, I remember at some point in time there was
That's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
Well, the
Well, there was a banner that they carried down for the museum.
Was the anniversary, the hundred and anniversary, but we're welcome to have that up again because we have the standards to support it.
I'll see what I can come up with.
Okay, cool, that's all I got.
Thank you so much.
Other than that.
All right.
Okay, it was pleasure.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll go for it.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager or designate to issue an encroachment permit for the fire service day.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tim Santa Inez and a second by Councilmember Sanchez, roll please.
Mayor Pro Tim Santinas.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
There you go, five oh.
Thank you guys, thank you so much. Looking forward to seeing you. Have a good night, thank you.
Get some sleep.
All right. I don't know if you guys
Yeah, there you go. No, it's thirteen A. Oh, yeah.
Next time I'll be sure to put more on the consent calendar for you so we can keep it short.
No, it's A, B, C, and D.
Yeah, why wasn't it?
Any recusals or conflicts or any items pulled on that big consent calendar we got? Not seeing any?
Who's the consent calendar?
Second.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Councilmember reports. Mayor Pro Tim Santa Inez.
No report tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Coops?
Yes. PJ, don't leave, I got, need you.
Good thing, good thing you were second, if I would have put you in fourth.
I need a little instruction. So you're probably aware and you get reports, the last two Sundays at Carruthers, there's been some activity that's not appropriate. Have you received those reports?
Yes, sir.
So I know that, I see that park every day because I turn the corner there, during the week, Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday, pretty dormant, not a lot of whole thing, I'm sure that's true of all parks, but on the weekends, we're really going full tilt with lots of activities. So when you employ people at the park, you have more staff on the weekends and left during the week, or how does that go?
There's not necessarily more, it's just the time of day and, and people on the park, so the hours change during the week we're open, depending on the time of the year, between eight and ten, ten o'clock.
Okay.
Weekends, right now is the busiest time of year, it's, it's busier now than it is even during summer.
You got spring break.
Because of, because of spring break, but mostly because of Little League. So Little League and then when you add the picnic groups, you add different groups, right now is our busiest time of year. And so there's staff at the parks. The, so at Carruthers Park this past Sunday, two of the groups were known and they were there all day, there wasn't much illegal activity that needed to be addressed or was addressed, that, that was witnessed. The, there was double parking, that, that became an issue.
Repon Street.
On Repon Street, yes. But the, the, the staff are there, they're, we, we, if we're having problems at a facility, more problems that are consistent, so for example, if there's safety issues that we've been having at one particular park where we may have had a lot of gang activity over the past several months that's been consistent, we may throw extra staff out there for that. But there's there's anywhere between three and four staff at each of the parks on duty and different parks have different activities that may be happening inside of their buildings, Carruthers does not, Carruthers has just a smaller activity room.
Yeah, I figured there's two in the building and two on the electric cart, is what I
Yeah, yeah, and that, we, we, we don't have that many anymore, usually we try to keep it at three, but it varies, it varies throughout the year, it varies on, there's different permits at different parks, so Thompson and Sims, Sims not right now, but Thompson Park has rentals, so if there's a rental group or if there's a larger activity like pickleball that we're planning for that days, there may be more staff, so it depends on the activities that are typical. This time of year, like next Sunday, we have, we extended a little bit, just we know we're going to have a lot of trash at the end of the day with the picnic groups for Easter group, so we're, we try to get as many staff out there as we can for that, and then we have our park patrol, which helps a, a little bit with that and, and tries to touch at the other parks.
Now, I know you instructed your staff that if things go south, lock it up and get out of there, that's still the case, isn't it? That we don't subject our employees to danger.
Correct, and it, so we had another incident yesterday at Thompson Park at the same time. Different, completely different group, but unpermitted park group partying loud on the Boulevard, but on the right of way, spilling into the park and our staff addressed them and they were not met with
Approval.
With approval and, and were denied. Phones out, you know, surrounding the staff, telling them that they were discriminating against them and, and at that point, staff just, they backed off, called Southwest Patrol, Southwest Patrol had the same issues with the group and then the sheriffs ended up being and it, these aren't regular things, they, it just happens and our staff, if they see something that's against municipal code, against the law, we, we address it, but we don't take it any further than if, if there's
Nor would I want you to.
If, if these individuals are, are not going to comply to our requests, that's okay and we're not going to, we're not going to push it and we're going to, we're going to call in those that can enforce some things.
Where I get the phone calls on Sunday is Repon Street primarily, a little bit on View Park, a little on Chicago where the parking is so intense, they double parked and they're parked across the driveway so people can't leave. And it's a group that I assume has not pulled a permit, I know that protocol says if you're going to have a large group and you get the paperwork done to make sure that you're authorized to be there. And I'm, I doubt whether or not your people would want to engage, say, who's got the permit for this or you have to leave, that wouldn't probably translate very well. But that is how we are supposed to mitigate large groups that are doing the wrong thing is by knowing who they are and, and that we respect that.
And it's rare occasion when when we don't have to approach them the day of, so we, we have had a large group post in a social media group that we're going to have a party at the skate park and we've been able to see that and it's very rare, but we've been able to see it, we've been able to communicate immediately with public safety, with Southwest and say, this, we're going to have a problem here, can we get a post there that day? And then we will also contact the group, if there's a contact information and let them know, your, your, your group's not welcome here for, for this large event. And so that's happened, but it's very rare. Yesterday, Sunday at Carruthers Park, I know there was a car club group we did not know about, but they, throughout the day, they were there early and there was no illegal activity that, that was noticed or addressed. There was a second group that actually reached out to us to see if they needed a permit, we, we ran them through our process and we said, no, as long as we're not designating an area for you, you're okay, just as a drop in use. And so we know they were at the park, we know both those two groups, they were not the double parkers. And so it was a, it was a pop-up group and it's just, this is the busiest time of the year and we, unless we have a consistent pattern that we can establish, it's, it's very difficult to mitigate.
It surprises me, in the morning when I go by the park, they take their cars and vehicles and drive them right into the park in order to do their setup. Wouldn't, I would think that somebody in the park would say, listen, you can't have that car in the middle of this park here.
Drive right on the grass?
Yes.
And I, and I think to myself, why doesn't staff, explain to them, that's not what we do here?
That should be a big ticket.
That, that is not allowed, so if that was not addressed, and I, from what I know, it was not and was not know, it was not and was not seen, so I don't know what time that, I know staff came in at ten.
Right, it was at nine o'clock, when I went to church.
And.
And there, and there's three or four cars right in the middle of the park, what are we doing here, brinkets, sprinkler heads, driving over barbecues?
And according, and, and according to staff, when they arrived at ten o'clock.
Right.
The, the cars were already parked to set up and they, they were not noticed on the park, so, yes, if that was seen, that is illegal, I mean, it happens middle of the day at Sims Park sometimes, and we have to go out and we do it, so, so you're aware that is not allowed and it does get addressed when it's seen.
Okay.
Does everybody get a citation?
Who would write it?
An administrative citation from code enforcement.
That, you'd have to have a.
We don't have staff there to issue that citation at that point, if they're there before our staff gets there, who's gonna issue that citation? I don't have twenty-four seven staff at the park.
No, I get it.
I mean, we, certainly if our staff is there, we can address that and our staff does, so if we can.
What is the definition of a public park, does that mean anybody in any community has access to the park anytime they want it? I mean, define public park.
Well, we have municipal codes that are very specific on when you can and cannot be in the park.
But I, it doesn't make any difference where I live, I have access to that park.
Correct.
But if I wanna buy, or I wanna, uh, get mulch from Lynn, I gotta prove I'm a citizen of Bellflower, if I wanna get an oil filter from Autozone, I gotta be a citizen of Bellflower, if I want sandbags from the rainy season, I gotta be a Bellflower resident. How is it that we can tweak certain activities for Bellflower residents only, but we don't have that same tweak for our parks?
So, so hold, hold on, we're, we're way beyond brief comments. If this is something that the council wants to explore, we're happy to put it onto a future agenda.
Okay.
But we're way beyond brief comments.
No, I get it, but.
And I understand the concern, Mike, the issue is it's not on the agenda and now we're definitely going down the rabbit hole with regard to.
All right, well, we won't do that anymore, but I appreciate you bringing me up to speed.
I think we knew we're getting, we're not gonna go home early, so we decided we're here.
Tell me, give me a little bit of information to think about. Thank you, PJ.
Where was I?
No comments for me.
No, and well, Sonny was done, I'm done now, and you got two to go.
Okay, I have no comment, too. All right. I'm gonna call for adjournment, uh, to the next regular council meeting here in Bellflower at five thirty PM, Monday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, adjourned.